There's a storm coming in, and I'd hate to be stuck in here with all you all in case there's snow. You know, we just, you know, it'd just be cold. We don't have backup heat. Okay, if the, uh, we'll have a calling to order, so we're here, so we'll have a roll call in the Republican Forum.
Counselor Orpessa?
Here.
Counselor Halverson?
Here.
Counselor Foster?
Here.
Counselor Heldenbrand?
Here.
Counselor Corn Best?
Here.
Counselor Corin?
Here.
Counselor Moore? Counselor Perry?
Present.
Counselor Sanchez will be absent today. Counselor Arnold?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll have the, uh, the pledge by Councilman Orpessa and the prayer by the Reverend Perry, if he doesn't mind. If we could, please, could all rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day. It's the day you made. Let us rejoice always and be glad in it. Lord, though we don't necessarily like the cold, we recognize it's necessary. We pray that you would keep folks safe and that everyone will have the heat and necessary things to keep warm tonight. Lord, I pray you continue to be with our police force and our fire department as they protect us, Lord, for those that are on the front line, strengthen them and encourage them. Now tonight, Lord, I pray that you would give us wisdom for the things at such a time as this that need to be handled, Lord, that we can do what is best for the city of Roswell and that we could flourish because of it. We ask all these things in the precious name of Christ our Savior. Amen.
Well, good evening. It was a kind of a unique day today in Roswell. The Loveless Healthcare Group opened a women's clinic in Roswell, and I just have to tell you that it's something I hope we can get the word out to all the women in town that there's a, we've had, there's a little problem around with the lack of women's healthcare in southeastern New Mexico. A number of cities have given up anything relating to anything to do with, with birth or anything like that. They're telling everybody they have to go somewhere else. And so if anybody saw the article in the paper in the Albuquerque Journal last Sunday about the problem we have getting physicians in the state of New Mexico, it's real. And I would just hope that everybody think about that and talk to your legislators about what they're going to have to do to attract physicians into our, into our state. Albuquerque and Santa Fe have a lot more than the rest of us. We have a huge shortage of physicians, as we all know. And I know my little hand here looks terrible, but I had to go to Lubbock for that, and I had to go to Lubbock to have a hold of my retina all fixed this year. And I can just tell you that it's hard. We don't have those kind of specialties in, in our community, and we need to figure out how to address them. And I hope that the county will join us at some point in time together for us all to work together in southeastern New Mexico to improve the number of physicians that we have in our own community. And the Loveless, that was a nice facility for women. There's an awful lot of women's healthcare issues that have gone unaddressed, including long waiting times between appointments. And so hopefully that'll go a long way. Mrs. Perry was there, and it was, it was a very nice event. So moving right along, if we have approval of the agenda, well, we have the, the item, well, we approve the agenda, would you like to read the minutes, or do you want to, for our council meetings on the ninth and the 12th? Do we need to read all that, or do you need approval?
We need to, pardon me, we need to approve the agenda first.
Okay. Well, all of those, so we have a motion, Councilman Perry.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the agenda this evening as presented with the following changes as requested by individual counselors. First change on consent agenda number 10, which is the capital outlay funds for the reallocation for the Recreation Aquatic Center, to be now taken off and placed as 30A in the agenda. Also, number 11, which is the consideration for the purchase of the emergency generator for the aquatic and recreation center to now become item 30B. And last but not least, number 16, which is the RFP scope of work for the special audit services to be taken off of the consent agenda and placed as 30C. And then number 30 would now become 30D. All other items remain as in there to include the, uh, to include the public hearings and other items as presented.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion for approval of the agenda as amended.
Second.
And there's a second made by Councilman Perry, seconded by Counselor, Counsel Lady Halverson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the remaining consent agenda once again with the removal of number 10, the removal of number 11, and the removal of number 16 to be, that are now on the regular city council agenda to include the items of, including the bids, RFP agreements, the leases, and resolutions, and the minutes of both the January 9th, January 12th, and January 19th.
Okay, we have motion by Councilman Perry, seconded by Councilman, Council Foster, Council, Councilman Foster. Any further discussion? Yes, sir. Counselor Orpessa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for, for the benefit of the public, did we have anybody signed up to speak on consent agenda items that have not been taken off of the consent?
Okay, thank you.
We only had two people, items speaking, two individuals speaking on item seven and item eight.
That's all I have as well, is just the two.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, for the record, Counselor Moore is here at 6:08.
Oh, welcome. Counselor Moore, welcome. Okay, all those in favor of approval of item two on the agenda, of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it passed by the vote of nine to zero. Okay, next we have a advisory report from Mr. Kunkel with the Airport Advisory Commission.
Sir and staff, thank you. City staff and from 3A Advertising, some of the items and projects reported on were the following. And this is not all of the items that we discussed, but a representation of several of them. An update on the South Hammerhead engine warm-up repair area, or repairs on that South Hammerhead. Jennifer Griego will be requesting a reallocation of funds to complete this project repair. Update on airfield lighting repairs. J&amp;G Electric will make repairs after funds have been reallocated. Passenger vehicle new parking lot, Phase One project. Bids will be presented at this meeting tonight and seeking approval to begin construction on the parking lot in April. The strategic plan RFP was open at 2:00 PM on Tuesday. A committee of Sean Powell, myself, and Jennifer Griego will review and rank the bids. Waterline infrastructure update on the east side of the RAC was addressed with a scheduled completion date of March 31, and it is still within budget. Terminal building signage and branding has been mostly completed. If you have not been able to take the time to go out and look at what's been done in the airport terminal, it is definitely time to go do that and observe the many updates and improvements that have been made. The east wall of the passenger waiting area will be updated with a photo op station for incoming outgoing passengers as an alien city greeting to people flying into and out of Roswell. The luggage retrieval area is also being updated with help from New Mexico True with Almagordo, Carlsbad, Redosa, and Roswell being advertised on our TV screen while the passengers are there to pick up their luggage. NMDOT marketing grant to attempt to increase local ridership at the RAC was, was presented by Juanita Jennings and 3A Advertising. This will include outdoor signage, advertisement, digital, digital banners, social media posts, and streaming audio through June of this year. Vacant RAC buildings were, were reported on by Jenna Landford. Four buildings and two tea hangers were discussed. Discussing, discussion primarily revolved around cleaning, making required repairs, and improvements to show the buildings to prospective tenants. That has not been addressed previously. Adequate information was developed by the staff to begin discussion slash decision to demolish building 112. That's one of the Dock High warehouses that are a real long Dock High warehouse out there, the one that has mold problems, and possibly be rebuild with smaller warehouse improvements. Further discussion will be required, and we'll bring our recommendations back to this committee. New business for upcoming leases that will be presented to the appropriate committees and city council in March for nine different properties slash tenants, or required repairs to city properties and facilities were discussed. Some of these discussions were simple and straightforward. Some required much more discussion and consideration. I want to publicly thank the city staff, especially Jenna Landford, for her many hours of effort to prepare these leases, and required repair efforts for the diligence of the Airport Commission members, and for the diligence of the Airport Commission members in reviewing this information. Our meetings are not as long as most of yours, but you can see from this report that the Airport Commission is attending to many items of importance that hopefully saves the city council and its committees a significant amount of time. One last item. The lease for the drag strip will be addressed by the council tonight. It's still on the consent agenda. I guess I hope it stays there, but I can certainly talk to it if we need to. That process has been ongoing for almost two years. That process has been ongoing for almost two years. Since November last year, the staff at the Air Center and our commission has worked diligently to develop a lease that the tenant, the FAA, the commission, the legal committee, and ultimately tonight, the city council can finally complete this long process. Your Airport Advisory Commission and Air Center staff have accomplished something that should be good for the drag strip, for the Air Center, and for the quality of life of Roswell that took far too long to get accomplished. Of the many recent activities addressed by the commission, I think we are extremely proud of this accomplishment. Thank you, and I stand for questions.
Do we have any questions of Mr. Kunkel on the Airport Advisory Commission? Seeing none? Uh, you know, I'd just like to say that I, there's a lot going on, and I appreciate you all, what you're doing, and hopefully we can get that, we've got all the lease worked out with the drag strip and things. Thank you all for all your work and, and working with that. And thank you for working diligently to, uh, move us forward and take us, uh, down the road on improving that and solving the issues that we have before us with the, uh, the many issues we have before us in front of us. Thank you for your commission and Ms. Brady and her staff and Jenna, all of them. Uh, it's nice to have everybody working together towards a common goal. So, thank you.
You're, you're most welcome. We appreciate the support of the city council and the mayor and especially the city staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kunkel. Thanks for your time to come down. Okay, next.
Mr. Mayor, can I, sorry. Uh, and I don't know if this is for Mr. Kunkel or, or attorney. I know that during the legal committee meeting, there were some questions about some things at the drag strip. All that has been clarified and rectified. Just want to make sure, we've already passed it with the consent, but since we're discussing the Air Center.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, yes, uh, the, the issues that were aligned with the drag strip were, were taken care of. They're, uh, the environmental concerns have been alleviated and our concerns with FAA about the overall financing that they would be providing has been taken care of as well.
It's good to hear. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have award for, uh, Presidential Volunteer Service Award. Commissioner Halverson?
Commissioner.
Commissioner, well, council lady, whatever you want to be. Today you can be a council lady.
Thank you. Um, I don't know how many of you are aware of the, uh, the amount of volunteers that Roswell has, and we want to recognize those that really, really step up. Um, I'm going to read a short intro about what the Presidential Volunteer Service Award is. It's created to recognize the important role of volunteers in America's strength and national identity. The award honors individuals whose service positively impacts communities in every corner of the nation and inspires those around them to take action too. So, Malia Juarez, would you please come up to the podium? And the family, you can join her too, Deanie and everyone. Um, she is only 15 years old. She was Miss, correct me if I'm wrong, Miss America Teen Volunteer, is that correct?
New Mexico.
Miss New Mexico. So, at her age, she's almost had 1,400 volunteer hours in 2022 alone. So, you have to have a certified organization present her the award. So Pioneer Bank did get her the award, and I'd like to come present this to you. I'll come down there. She can attest. I don't know how many hours she's volunteered for Keep Roswell Beautiful.
I can't even track all her hours. I need you to stand up there with her.
Here's your pin. This is a letter from the president, and here's your certificate.
Stand over there. Fire is too long.
Okay.
Smile. And then we also ask for the gift that is awarded.
Thank you, Malia.
Malia, you know, it's, it's wonderful to see, we hear a lot of things, but to see a young person, uh, really go out and take the world by storm. Thank you very much for your dedication, uh, to our community and to our state of New Mexico. Thank you very, very much, and so, thank you. And her family's all in the back. Can we everybody, their family wave their hand so we can all, so we get them all? Okay. Thank you. Thank you all for raising such a wonderful daughter and sister. Thank you all. Okay, next. Okay, now, you have to bear with me on this one. This one's a little bit different. This is for employer support of the guard in our Reserve Patriot Award presentation. Uh, and if we could, we have Mr. Steve Smith and, or Gary, Gary Smith.
Gary.
And Steve Henderson is here also. So he's our councilman forever who's always been a strong supporter of the guard. Steve, would you like to come up as well, or? Mr. Marvin Wells, too. We're all, so.
Well, good evening. Uh, yes, I'm Gary Smith, not Steve.
I'm sorry. Steve Henderson.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, and, uh, we are so pleased to be here this evening. Thank you, uh, city council for giving us the time to, uh, you know, make this, uh, award. Uh, I want to say just a little bit about employer support to the guard and reserve, uh, commonly known as ESGR because a lot of people still don't really know, uh, who we are or what we do. Uh, number one, we are a defense, uh, organization officially sanctioned by, uh, uh, you know, the, uh, the federal government. Uh, the big thing different with us is that, uh, our work is done almost exclusively by volunteers. Here in the state, there are two paid employees. Uh, everybody here locally on our committee are volunteers. And in speaking of that, uh, there are four of us here tonight. Uh, I'm, I'm Gary Smith. I'm the local chair. Steve Henderson, uh, you all know, uh, Steve's been an ESGR volunteer for well over 30 years, a former chair here himself. Marlon Wells, who, uh, has been an ESGR member, I think, for about 10 years, give or take. And then up there sitting with you, Juliana Halverson, who's been a member for two or three years. So, we have, I think, right now about 15 or 16, uh, local volunteers, uh, who devote a lot of time, uh, not that much, but still it's volunteer effort. And, uh, you know, we are so pleased, you know, most people feel, uh, and, you know, we, we feel ourselves that we are, but I know statewide, uh, just about everybody would agree that the Roswell Committee is number one in the state, and, uh, we're so proud to, uh, of that. So, uh, what ESGR does is that we work closely with the service members themselves, the guardsmen and reservists, and their employers, because that's, that's the important thing. Uh, all of these ladies and gentlemen periodically are called to do military service. Sometimes deployment, sometimes just training, sometimes their annual training or weekend meetings, and, and in order to do that, they have to leave their jobs. And we want to make sure that when that occurs, that that employer releases them, uh, without any, uh, problems, uh, that they get their jobs back when they return or along they're gone, uh, and that everything goes smoothly. And that's our sole mission. Uh, and, you know, fortunately, I can say that we're reasonably successful in that. But when we're not, then we have the resources to go to bat and fight for, uh, normally the service member, but sometimes it's the other way around. It's the employer that's not being, uh, maybe, uh, maybe the service member is not, uh, being honest with the employer. So we represent both. Uh, and, uh, one of the things that we try to do to make this all a great process is, uh, we do events throughout the year like luncheons, boss lifts. There's several people, people here who have been treated to a helicopter ride around the city of Roswell. That was compliments of, uh, our Army Aviation Section. You know, we periodically have lunches, a lot of you have come, and, uh, so that's one thing we do. The other thing that we really, really work hard at is encouraging our service members to, uh, recognize their employer with an award, and, uh, that's why we're here tonight. Roswell Police Department, uh, has received numerous awards over the last several years. I myself am familiar with, I'd say probably six or eight awards, uh, both the Patriot Award, which is the, uh, what we consider to be the first level award. Uh, this is where the service member nominates his or her, uh, his boss supervisor for this award. Uh, they've also been nominated many, many times, uh, for the Freedom Award, which is a higher level award. The Freedom Award, there are only three given in the state of New Mexico in all states each year. One large employer, one small employer, one public service. Roswell Police Department hasn't got one yet, but they're well on the road, and I fully expect someday they're going to win that award. So, without any further ado from me, uh, I would like, uh, to be able to present tonight's award to Chief Philip Smith, uh, the Chief of Police here in Roswell, and, uh, his nominator, which is, uh, Albert, Alberto Adano, uh, who is an active member of the, uh, military. So if you gentlemen, please come forward. And, and one thing I might add is that, uh, the nominator always gets an opportunity to say a few words, uh, when they nominate the, uh, their supervisor. And, uh, what Mr. Adano said about, uh, Chief, uh, Smith is, "My supervisor is the Chief of Police at the Roswell Police Department. He has been very supportive all these years he has worked here, not only for my service, but for the other men and women in the military. He is 100% behind each and every officer who has a calling to do, to both an officer on the street and a service member." And that's his words. Thank you very much for those. So, uh, with no further ado, uh, we'd like, uh, Chief and, uh, Mr. Adano to come up and will present this award.
Mr. Adano, would you care to speak or say anything beforehand?
Yes.
Is your time in service?
Uh, I'm just happy that the chief is here. He's always been supportive of all the service members at the police department, so I'm just grateful that I was able to nominate him for the award.
Okay. Thank you. Would you like to present your award to Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Now, you guys get together where you can get in a picture.
Uh, Alberto, I want you up here too, please.
Smile a little bit. Come on.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you, sir.
Thank you for nominating him.
No, go ahead. Go ahead. It'd be hard. You'll give us a ticket if we don't, if we shut you up.
Thank you.
No, we're glad to have you.
First of all, um, I appreciate the award, but if I really were to receive any award, it's in the form of the achievements and the accolades on the men and women, both sworn and civilian in our police department. This police department, over the past decade, has changed from an enforcement agency to an agency that deals in relationships, trust, outreach, and building, well, I said building relationships, but it's key and it's a change, and it's fantastic, and it's led to a reduction in crime. Uh, our staffing is where it should be, and we're growing, and I believe our relationship building in the community is unrivaled at this point. But I want to point out one thing before I leave, and this is it, I'm all done. None of that can happen without the support of, number one, the community, number two, this council in front of me, this mayor, the management in the city. None of the stuff that our police department can do can take place without the support from you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And certainly for the gentlemen that are here from the, that, uh, employer supporters of the guard, I want to thank you all for keeping that because all our community has to be aware of the time that our soldiers that dedicate for us through the guard, that dedicate to us, and certainly, uh, all of you all are certainly have been longstanding members of the, uh, of the guard with the exception of Council Lady Halverson, but she's working towards it. But, uh, you know, Councilman Henderson, I, for years, I, I mean, you've been a rising star, and it's already up there forever shining brightly to get other people in to support our guard, and I think we all owe you a great deal of gratitude and certainly to your lovely wife, Carol, for putting up with you too. So, it's all good, but thank you all. Thank, thanks for making truly, you know, Roswell an all-American city. Thank you all very much. Council Lady Halverson?
I just want to thank all the gentlemen on the, Gary Smith has been amazing just organizing everything for, I don't know how many years, again? How many years have you been doing this?
About 30.
Yeah, so.
Maybe a little more than that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all very, very much. Okay, next we have, uh, the reminder, any public participation items, we only have someone signed up to speak on item seven and item eight. On those are the only areas we have. We do have one other public participation thing that we should probably bring up. Uh, for those of you who probably haven't been involved with, in the sheep business, you never recognize when somebody's been clipped before, but somebody who's been in there, we recognize when someone's been clipped. But you know, today we had someone that got clipped on their birthday, and so, if we could, uh, Mr. Intima, it's, your birthday today. Would you stand up and receive applause from the council for your, and happy birthday wishes? And I hope your lovely bride and daughter are watching because it will be fun. All right. Thank you very much, Councilor, Mr. Intima. Okay, next we go into the public hearings. The next we have is item six, uh, ordinance 23 dash 01. Uh, Council, Councilor Hildebrand, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we hold a public hearing to consider adoption of proposed ordinance 23 dash 01, an ordinance pursuant to NMSA 1978, section 1 dash 23 dash 3.1, 2018, to opt in for the election of the municipal officers of the city of Roswell in the next regular local election.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, seconded by Council Lady, uh, Halverson, uh, Arnold, excuse me. Okay, if we could, Mr. Intima, would you care to present the topic?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council? Uh, this piece of legislation would opt the city of Roswell into the regular nonpartisan election cycle that follows on November of even numbered years. All races are nonpartisan. The county clerk would run the event. We see, uh, this would bring some savings to the city. Uh, the office of the city attorney and the office of the city clerk are in support of this. Uh, candidate filing would be in August, and, uh, by the way the ordinance is presently written, there'd be a 90-day, approximately 90-day deduction in your terms. Uh, you can opt in to increase your own terms, of course, and that would be about a 270-day increase. Um, while I'm here, the real expert, our county clerk, is present, so if you had any questions, um, the honorable county clerk could also address them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fuller, would you care to address the group, or you just want to answer questions? Just answer questions, okay. Okay, to members of the committee, Councilman Orpressa.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Corn.
After my fellow friend.
After my fellow friend gets through, I'd like to have the floor.
After Juan gets through, okay.
You recognize them first, that's all okey-dokey.
Okay, well, that's fine.
I'm sorry, I've not used all this electronic stuff. Leave me alone. It's been a long day.
Okay, we'll put you back in training mode. And Councilman Orpeza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question as to how is this going to affect the election of the Mayor Pro Tem? Is it still going to remain in April, or is it going to change to January, February?
That is it. Councilman, or Attorney Intima.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Orpeza, it would stay the same date, so we'd have to pass a resolution amending that.
So it's right now, it would stay up to April?
Mr. Mayor, with Mr. Intima's, I, my understanding, as I looked at it, Mayor Pro Tem is determined at your meeting where you are, your, your...
You're right. Sorry.
Your first meeting, so it'd be the first meeting.
It'd be the organizational meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Which would be January or February?
That would be January.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. She's bashful, but Ms. Fuller, you'd come up here, please. Mr. Mayor, the county clerk already has to do elections for other entities on the same day that we would be running, if this passes. And I think it would be helpful and full disclosure to give, have her give us a rundown on other offices that will be on the ballot at the same time. And when we get into the discussion on the ordinance itself later on, I'll give you my reasons for bringing this forward. So if we could, Ms. Fuller?
Sure, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Fuller, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilors. So the local election is held every November in odd-numbered years, yes? And it includes all of the districts that are, have taxing authority but are nonpartisan. So currently on the ballot, we have college boards, school boards, soil and water districts, and the municipalities of Dexter, Higerman, and Lake Arthur have already opted in, and so they are on the ballot as well.
Thank you. Councilman Perry.
I would just like to say, just a little bit of history. When this first came forth as a consideration, the reason the city of Roswell held office is because we just were not sure of how this process, as it came through so quickly, we just were not sure. It wasn't that we were against the process, we just did not seem to understand it at the time. As I've looked at it, I see that this could potentially have even a greater effect of helping out the school board races, the races for the college board, that maybe people aren't as looking at as heavily like the college board. So I just say I'm in favor of moving forward. I think it'll be a good thing. And I think that our county clerk and our city clerk work very well together, so I don't see any conflict there whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. And one of the things that I like about it is the education process, that every November, this second Tuesday in November, you're going to vote. You're either going to vote in a partisan election or a nonpartisan election. And so it gets people on that cycle. The other part that I like, because March is such an odd time, I can't remember one election, a city election we had, that Wednesday, the day after the election, I run into somebody and they say, "Oh, I'm going to vote for you." And you say, "No, you're not, because if you didn't vote yesterday, you're not voting." They always forget when they're going to vote in March. And so this at least gets to the point where, the educational wise, every second Tuesday in November, you're voting, no matter if it's a partisan or nonpartisan election, there's an election. The only drawback that I had had for the longest time was not getting a voting convenience center out at the base. Not so much, it is my ward, but not so much for Ward Five people, but because we keep saying the base is so important for employment. And if you look back at the people who vote, generally it's more Ward One and Ward Two, but they're the people that are working out there and it's for their convenience to go ahead and vote. And with that, I will just say that we need to talk to our county commissioners, because they're going to be the ones who decide where the voting and convenience centers are, and that, it takes it out of our jurisdiction. But other than that, I'm for the educational portion of this, and it should work out for the best. So I'm for it too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Ms. Fuller, the, my only comments, I think this does leave a lot, I think this is a move forward in getting participation in elections. I do feel, though, that being that our city is one of the largest participants in this process, that there should be an election poll in each ward of, so that just means there has to be five somewhere in the city, but whatever you do, five of them have to be spaced out in each ward. And that's, I noticed, I think, when I looked at the last time on the voting that was done at the base, there were only seventy-seven votes or something cast there, and there were hundreds in some of the other places. But whether or not that's the place to put the poll, but there ought to be a ballot box in every ward for the city of Roswell. From the number of people that have the opportunity to participate in this election, I think that would be fair. But I understand also that anybody can vote, in whatever election polling place you go to, you can vote in whichever ward you want. So that is very convenient as well. So that might encourage participation as well. And I think, I think this is a good thing. Any further comments? Okay, seeing none, then if the clerk would call the roll.
Councilor Orpeza?
Yes.
Councilor Halverson?
Yes.
Point of order? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, because it is a public hearing, the question has to, at least, to be asked. I dare say there's probably no one out there, but the question does have to be asked if there's anyone for or against who would like to speak. Sorry.
Well, that's true, yeah. I'm sorry, but I did ask everybody who'd sign up, wanted to sign up early.
Yeah, at each individual one, we have to ask.
But anyway, is there anyone, excuse me, before we go through with that, is there anyone who, in the public, that would care to speak for or against this item? Is there anyone in the public who would care to speak for or against this item? Is there anyone in the public who would care to speak for or against this item? Okay, we've asked three times. Seeing none, if the clerk would call the roll.
Councilor Orpeza?
Yes.
Councilor Halverson?
Yes.
Councilor Foster?
Yes.
Councilor Hildebrand?
Aye.
Councilor Corn Best?
Yes.
Councilor Corn?
Yes.
Councilor Moore?
Yes.
Councilor Perry?
Aye.
Councilor Arnold?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one.
It'd be nine to, nine to nothing. Right? I mean, that's what I counted. Okay. Okay, next we have item seven. We do have one person signed up to speak, Mr. Nathan White, on city ordinance number twenty-three dash zero. This is a public hearing for the adoption of ordinance twenty-three dash zero, amending chapter twenty-two of the Roswell City Code regarding construction and maintenance of sidewalks. Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of the proposed ordinance twenty-three dash zero-two, and ordinance amending chapter twenty-two of the Roswell City Code regarding construction and maintenance of sidewalks.
Second by Council Lady Arnold.
Second.
Okay, so now we're on that. Councilman Intima.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this amendment is pretty simple. What we do is, what has happened is striking the mandatory language that is, was questionably lawful, and instead inserting the language that provided by state law, where the city may, through resolution, require owners of property to repair, but it does not require the city to execute such a resolution. Maybe more simply put, is if somebody destroys sidewalk that the city has placed there, the city now will have, through this ordinance and state law, has the capacity to follow a process that is sufficient under due process requirements to require that repair, but is in no obligation to make repairs mandatory upon the public.
Okay. Are there any, would anyone care to speak in favor? Mr. Nathan White? He'd signed up to speak, I believe, on this ordinance? You know, Mr. White, if you'd come forward, we're going to have to swear you in. But you don't have to swear, man, on a public hearing? Okay, sorry.
Well, I guess I, I guess I missed the public meeting earlier, when they was talking about this ordinance. I had read it, then read it in the paper that was going to be tonight. I have a hundred and twenty-five foot of sidewalk in front of my house, it's on city property. And I'm expected, I wanted to find out, I'm expected to replace that sidewalk myself and pay for it? That's what I'm reading, and this ordinance is poorly written, it doesn't say whether it's on private property or city property. And that's, that's the question I have. I have a hundred and twenty-five foot and one that has sidewalk on it that's crumbling. When I go to the post office or walk to the store, I usually walk out in the, along the side of the street, because the sidewalks are bad, all the way, you know, where I'm going, until we get into town here. We've got sidewalk from, from when there's still, there's still hitching rings in the sidewalk in this city. And the rest of the sidewalks have been allowed to deteriorate. I don't know whether, probably poorly constructed to start with, or didn't have any lime in them to repel the water, but I, the way I read this, I'm going to be responsible for replacing the sidewalk on the city, in city property. Now, anybody can use that sidewalk, and I don't use it, but it's on the front of my property, and I have to replace the city's sidewalk? Is that what, is that what this ordinance says?
The, it's my understanding, Mr. Intima, would you care to respond to the current law requires?
Yes, sir.
The law that's on the books now requires you to repair the sidewalk. That's on the existing books, the way I understand it. Mr. Intima, would you help me?
Right. The current ordinance takes out the mandatory language on property owners and forces the city, if they want to do something to a property owner, to go through a notice and comment process. That, so all this is doing is taking away the mandatory requirement and inserting the process state law requires.
Well, in some of the places where they rehabbed the street, they've replaced the sidewalks and everything.
That's true.
And just because they haven't, you know, the sidewalks are in bad shape over in my neighborhood, all over, anywhere you go. We need either a bond issue or, or look for some of this state money they've got an abundance of up there in Santa Fe to start replacing the sidewalks around town. I don't see why I'm responsible for replacing the sidewalk that's on city property. Doesn't belong to me. I can't build anything else out on city property. So that was my concern.
Yes.
Correct. And this ordinance does not require you to build, or to fix that?
This...
But the repair and replacement?
It does not require you to do it, no.
Well, I don't, I don't understand how I could, if there was a legal responsibility. I know in Albuquerque, they have the sidewalks a part of the city, because the city's been sued for them all over Albuquerque, and up in Rio Rancho. They've been sued for people injuring themselves on bad sidewalks. They never talk about the property owner being responsible for it. But down here, I'll be responsible for it. If somebody trips and falls on that broken sidewalk in front of my house, on city property, they're going to sue me?
Uh, no, no.
Well, I don't, I don't...
That isn't in this ordinance, no. That, yeah, that's not in this ordinance.
Well, I just, I just think the ordinance, to me, was poorly written. It doesn't, it says sidewalks, but it doesn't spell out whether on city property or on my property.
Excuse me, Mr. White, Council Lady Arnold, I think, would like to respond to you.
Thank you.
Hold on just a minute.
Yeah, hi. Actually, so I think a lot of my concern, I'm Council Lady Arnold, and a lot of my concern when I saw the, this sidewalk ordinance a couple of years back was, I just kind of felt that that was a little bit overboard. So what I did was I asked City Attorney Intima to take a look at it. And what we're doing is matching state law. So right now, you are required to repair your sidewalks. What this does is actually makes it more where the city has the ability to regulate sidewalks, instead of just blanket requiring them. Now, when that, when they say regulate, that doesn't mean they're going to have just someone from the city come to your house and tell you, you have to repair your sidewalks. You will have due process. So that gets you the opportunity for a hearing, to go before the council, and then it's mandated through that way. So it's not just a blanket demand that you have to have it. There is actually a step that's inserted now, that was not there before, to give you the opportunity to contest or speak to the council prior to having to just fix it. So while it is not what I believe it should be if I had it, you know, if I could actually write this, I would, I agree with you as far as who should be responsible for sidewalks. I do believe that infrastructure is the role of the government, but here's the reality. Infrastructure and sidewalks are extremely expensive, and getting to that point to where the city can afford to actually replace all the sidewalks, excuse me, is actually, you know, we're not there. So the reality is, to remove the requirement on you that's on you right now, and to actually set up a process, to actually give you, if we need to regulate or have something repaired, then at that time, there's a process. And in my opinion, it actually, it is better for our citizens to move forward and match state law. That's what we're trying to do, is match the state law. I think that's all I have to say at this time. If you have any questions, okay?
Well, in Albuquerque, the city is responsible for all the sidewalks up there, as far as I can tell, because of the lawsuits that have been filed. In Albuquerque, people have injured themselves on bad sidewalks, or broken sidewalks.
Yeah, yes, I actually...
I haven't seen that happen here.
No. That's because the city of Albuquerque has a larger tax base than we do, and so our focus is really trying to get us on streets. We've done things to actually get to where new construction is required to be put in, but we're not quite, fiscally, we're not quite where Albuquerque is. I've lived in Houston and they had the same thing. It's a smaller city and our funding is a lot smaller as well, so we have to kind of prioritize, unfortunately. But I do hear you, and I do agree with you, but we're just not there yet.
Well, I would, I would vote for a bond issue and pay more in my taxes, on my taxes, so that everybody participates in renewing the sidewalks, repairing the sidewalks, or even placing new sidewalks in the city.
Yes, thank you.
And do you have your address? What is your address? I think our clerk needs to have your address.
Yeah.
Where do you live?
East Fifth, on East Fifth Street.
East Fifth? Do you have that?
Right close to the park.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Next we have Council Lady Best. Did you have a comment?
My question was answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. White. Thank you for your comments.
All right, thank you.
Are there any further discussions on ordinance number twenty-three dash oh-two? Are there any further discussions on ordinance number twenty-three dash oh-two? Okay, so we have, now, are there no further comments on this? Any further comments from the audience on, pardon?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just, and you just, you just hit it, as long as we just ensure people don't have to sign up for, for these, for these particular ones, just probably won't have anybody come, but just so we've got on record if anybody was to have anything to say about it later, that we did give ample opportunity for the, for and against.
You want me to ask three times? I did one already.
On each one of them, sir.
Okay. Okay, so we got one down. Does anyone care to speak for or against this ordinance number thirty-three, or twenty-three dash zero-two concerning, regarding the destruction and maintenance of sidewalks? Is there anybody that would care to speak in ordinance number twenty-three dash zero-two on, concerning the maintenance of sidewalks and construction of sidewalks? Okay, that's the third time. Seeing none, any further discussion from the council? Seeing none, the clerk could call the roll.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Haldenbrand?
Aye.
Counselor Corn Best?
Yes.
Counselor Best, I'm sorry, Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Aye.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Vote of nine in the firm, none negative. Ordinance number twenty-three dash zero-two is duly passed. Next, we have zoning case variance twenty-three dash zero-zero-one. This is the public hearing for the consideration of zoning case number twenty-three dash zero-zero-one, variance for, variance to authorize the, uh, concerning the authorize and establish hours of operation of an adult-use retail cannabis establishment. Mr. Perry?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as required in Roberts' rules, all motions have to be made in the affirmative, so I'll do my best with, with getting through this one. I make a motion that we approve zoning case twenty-three dash zero-zero-one, the VAR, uh, for the variance to authorize the established hours of operation for the establishment, as written.
We have a motion to, uh, to have, to approve the hours for operations of, of zoning case number twenty-three dash zero-zero-one on the hours of operation. We have Councilman Perry, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Council Lady Arnold. Okay, uh, Mr. Mabers?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Tonight, we're bringing before you zoning case twenty-three dash zero-zero-one. This is a variance request by Dreams Dispensary to amend their hours of operation. They are currently in operation at twenty-three oh-three North Main Street. They occupy Suites one-oh-one and one-oh-two in Cas Plaza. There's a couple of maps up there for you to show that they are within the north end of town, the business district in that end of town, and you can see with the, from the Chavez County Assessors map, that they are located in a strip center. There is R-three zoning to the east, but there has nothing currently been constructed. It's all vacant property. Sorry to interrupt. Because this is a quasi-judicial hearing, everybody speaking should be sworn in.
Okay. Do we need to swear, Mr. Mabers, yet?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd say the easiest thing to do is just ask anybody who plans to speak on this to stand up and, uh, take the oath, just that, that's sufficient.
Okay, Mr. Mabers, Mr. Cody Fisher is here to speak. Anyone else who cares to speak on this item? This is all that has signed up, is Mr. Fisher, Mr. Mabers. Anyone else who wants to speak, either now or any of the three times, you have to be sworn in, so we can all swear everybody in at once, if that's okay. So if you would stand up, the clerk, do you wish, the oath, or do you want the?
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mabers?
All right. Specifically on the variance request, Dreams Dispensary is requesting a variance to extend their hours of operation of the, of their adult-use retail cannabis establishment. The second bullet point there is their current hours of operation. They are open Monday through Saturday, ten AM to seven PM, and Sunday, eleven AM to five PM. These were the hours of operation that staff was instructed to give. These are the hours of operation that every cannabis establishment in town has agreed to adhere to in order to create a level playing field. The only cannabis dispensary that does not adhere to these hours was the original one for, the original dispensary for, um, Pecos Valley Production, their original dispensary. They are oper, they are, have shorter hours than what the city council allowed. They are actually not open on Sunday, and they have much shorter hours on Saturday as well, although they do open at nine AM and close at six PM. That was because that, that particular location where the original Pecos Valley Production is located at is a medical office complex, and the surrounding offices are all open either at eight or nine o'clock in the morning, they all close at five PM. So their hours are consistent with the surrounding operations. The requested hours of operation in the bold, they would like to be open Saturday through, or Sunday through Saturday, so seven days a week, from ten AM until ten PM. Mr. Cody Fisher, who is here tonight, provided a letter of justification in order to support his request. You can find that, uh, letter on pages twenty-three through twenty-five of the agenda packet. As of today's date, the Planning and Zoning Office has received zero written protests, zero verbal protests, and zero inquiries. The Planning and Zoning Commission, just to give you a little background, their meeting on January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to forward this case to the city council without a specific recommendation. City council's recommendation, of course, is to hold the public hearing tonight and make a final determination based upon the findings of fact presented for either approval or denial on zoning case twenty-three zero-zero-one, which is a request for a variance of the established hours of operation for Dreams Dispensary. And we stand for questions.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Uh, Mr. Fisher, would you care? I, I think we have no questions yet from the council.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment? So, um, I, this is the first variance hearing that's been done while I've been City Attorney, to my recollection, so I just wanted to state the legal standard that the council needs to apply. So Section ten of the zoning code provides that in order to get a variance, the, the owner, the, the petitioner must demonstrate that there are extraordinary conditions which prevent the property owner from being able to comply with the zoning requirements, and if strict application of this ordinance would result in peculiar, exceptional, or undue hardship as opposed to mere inconvenience to the property owner. Undue hardship or unnecessary hardship, that has been defined by the State Supreme Court, and it has a special meaning in the zoning, uh, rules. The exact showing necessary to prove unnecessary hardship varies from case to case, and the city council must make its initial determination by considering all relevant circumstances. However, it is clear that a showing that the owner might receive a greater profit if the variance is granted is not sufficient justification in and of itself for a variance.
Does anyone have any questions over there? How they have to think? Okay, next, okay, Mr. Fisher?
Yes, uh, thank you guys for, for letting me speak. First, I just wanted to start with, um, we have nine dispensaries open across the state of New Mexico right now. We're, we're gonna, we'll be at thirteen.
Excuse me, Mr. Fisher, can we get your name and your address, please?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. My name is Cody Fisher. My address is sixty-thirteen Tree Stand Point, Aubrey, Texas, seven-six-two-two-seven.
Thank you.
Um, so first, I want, I wanted to start with, uh, you know, we have nine locations open. We'll be at thirteen here in the next sixty days. At all of our locations across the entire city, or across the entire state of New Mexico, um, we are at ten to ten, uh, which is why we, we chose ten to ten here. The, we have two exceptions. We're actually open nine AM to ten PM in Farmington and in Taos. Farmington actually had restricted hours in the beginning during, it was around, is in April, and they started with eight to eight. Um, and within two to three weeks of, of going recreational, they, they changed it after the, uh, the industry, you know, spoke to them about it. Um, and so now those, uh, those hours are actually eight AM to eleven PM. And so, um, we are asking to, to, to extend our hours, uh, you know, the, the need is there. Uh, we are turning people away every night at, at seven PM that are, that are purely looking for products, you know, to, to help them with their pain, anxiety, and sleep. And I, I had a list here of other businesses that are allowed to be open later, later than us. Um, and, and a couple of them, you know, uh, one of them's Variety Liquor Lounge, uh, twelve PM to, to two AM Friday through Wednesday. Quality Liquor, Monday through Friday, eight to ten, Saturday and Sunday, eight to eleven. Um, we've got some twenty-four hour hotels, Walgreens, um, you know, food places, um, you know, and, and, and the, you know, we're speaking about public safety, you know, part of this, um, you know, alcohol is one of the, you know, top, uh, leading causes of death in the state of New Mexico, and they have more access in the city of Roswell than, than cannabis, you know, so, um, but with that, I'm here for any questions, um, and thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, council, okay. I don't know if the questions will be directed if you, if you don't mind waiting there, it'll be fine.
That's fine.
We have Councilman Corn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna start with Mr. Mabers real quick. If I remember correctly, 'cause I have the full ordinance in front of me, that we were concerned as a city council with the surrounding neighborhood. Is that kind of a short version of the whole ordinance?
In the original ordinance, we started out with setting hours of operation based on the neighborhood precedent.
No, you're not answering my question, sir. Uh, the ordinance itself, forget about the time right now, but we were concerned with neighborhoods, I'm not gonna ask for definition neighborhood, but where these cannabis locations were had to reflect the neighborhood, kinda sorta.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you, all right. So with that, Mr. Foster. So you, in your letter, you listed eight locations here. Okay? So Quality Liquor is how far from your establishment?
Uh, I'm not sure of the exact, um...
Is it closer than-
Mileage or anything. Um, I do know, you know, one example that I, that I did wanna bring up and I, and I forgot. In the picture of our, in our center, there's, there's a smoke shop, you know, um, and I have those hours, uh, here, and it's, uh, they're allowed to be open nine AM to, to ten PM, and that's, that's every day. And that smoke shop actually carries products that are, that have psychoactive effects, similar to us. You know, there's, there's actually legal CBD products on the market now that, that do have psychoactive effects that are legal in, you know, forty-five-plus states. And so them being allowed to be open, you know, ten PM, when they are selling a similar product to us, um, and then us having to close at seven, I do think hurts us.
Let me, let me rephrase my question. This your letter, right?
Yes.
And you researched it, correct?
Mm-hmm.
You just didn't pull things out of the air, or you went and looked?
Uh, I, I basically just chose businesses that were in the city of Roswell.
Fair enough, fair enough. So is Quality Liquor within three, four blocks of your establishment?
Um, I, I, I can look here, um, but I do not have that on me right now. I, I believe it was within, within two miles. We, we searched Main Street.
That's not the neighborhood under my definition. I don't know what the rest of these people are gonna say, but that's not a neighborhood in my definition, okay? So you don't know how far Quality Liquor is or Variety Liquor? Big Lots, do you have any idea where it is in proximity of your establishment?
Um, I, I, I do not. I can, I can look here real quick, uh...
Well, whatever.
So... You are talking...
What's your address?
Twenty-three oh-three.
Twenty-three?
I got it right here, it's three miles.
Okay. So you're, how far did you say?
Um, I'm, we're three miles from Quality Liquor.
Okay. Big Lots, I can guess, but I'll let you do it. I'm asking the questions, not answering them.
Um, Big Lots is going to be... Point, point three miles.
Twenty-three miles?
Uh, point three.
Oh, point three, okay, I'm sorry. Golden Corral?
Golden Corral is point five.
Half a mile. Home Depot?
It's right across the street.
From Golden Corral?
Uh, I thought you said Home Depot.
Home Depot.
Yeah, it's right across the street.
Across the street. Golden Corral was a half-
So you got, that one's in the neighborhood, then?
The Ho, Home Depot, yeah.
Okay. Whataburger is a block or so away? Okay, so you got two here.
Uh, point three.
And Los Cerritos?
They are point four.
Twenty, point-
Point four.
Half mile. That's not really a neighborhood. Domino's Pizza. I know where the one is by my house, but it's not the one you're talking about.
Something old Whataburger, uh, take the right chicken.
That's one point six.
Point one-six?
What, one point six miles.
Prob, probably point three.
So, so would you agree with me that Quality Liquor, Variety Liquor are a distance away?
If, if you're saying that, you know, a, a neighborhood is, is, you know, I'm just not sure what, you know, you can drive that in a, in a minute or two.
So depending on what your personal definition is, only... potential is Home Depot, Whataburger, which opened twenty-four hours, Los Cerritos and Domino's Pizza, everything else in here is Golden Corral half mile away? Did I understand that correctly?
Uh, I believe so.
That's a little big for a neighborhood, in my estimation. That's just me. Okay, can you answer my questions? Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Council Lady Arnold.
So, um, hello, I am just speaking, my husband, he says I'm too close to the mic, so I can't tell if you guys can hear me or not. Okay, so I, I do wanna thank you actually for coming up and, and putting this forward. What I'm gonna say to you is basically my perspective and my opinion only, 'cause I can't speak for the other eight here on the council, but, um, I remember when we were working on the, the ordinance, the cannabis ordinance, and time, opening, closing, that was a real big issue for us, and that was one thing that we were able to actually establish. And I, I actually respect the fact as an entrepreneur that you're asked here, up here asking, um, but I would be more open if I had the other, the other entities in our community all coming together and asking y'all at once, because if, if I extend this courtesy to you, there's a huge issue there. And I think that while other communities in the state are, have different hours and everything, what we look for is what fits in Roswell. And at this point in time, it's new, we're monitoring it, and while I respect and appreciate you coming forward, for me, I think that we need to continue to monitor and then look at possibilities when it's more of an industry issue, okay? So, but I'm just letting you know my thoughts on it, so, anyway, I yield.
I did wanna say, um, you know, when we started the process with Kevin and them, um, that, we, we did bring that up, because we have spoken to other dispensaries in the state, in the city, and, uh, we, we spoke to four that would wanna extend their hours. And, and, and also, you know, in some of these other cities where we are open ten to ten, and, and other dispensaries can be open, and, you know, whenever they want- can be open whenever they want, right, within certain guidelines, some choose to close at seven still, some choose to close at eight, some choose to close at nine, some choose to close at 10, and then some stay open later than us in certain cities. So I don't think it, you know, by itself, it sets an unfair standard, because, you know, that business is gonna set its hours for when the demand is there, and we know it is there for us, you know? These hours, really all they do is hurt hard-working people. All they do is hurt people who are at work, and they have to hurry and rush and try to plan their week, and, you know, just to find relief, you know? And it is frustrating for them, and, you know, I would love to work with you guys and do whatever I need to do. I can bring the whole industry in here, I can bring patients and customers in here, I mean whoever you guys need to hear from. And even the ten to ten, like, you know, we just put that. We can do eight, we can do nine, whatever you guys are comfortable with, you know, we would be okay with that as well, of course. And we will work with you guys to address any concerns that would come up, or even after we're approved, if there is concerns that come up, we're gonna work with you guys, because, you know, part of what we're having to do right now is, you know, make us look, you know, we wanna look good to society, we wanna be contributing members to cities that we're in, in a positive way. And so, yeah, we just, we wanna work with you guys to extend hours in any way possible.
Just a few things to discuss. I appreciate what Mr. Intima brought up about undue hardship, because I think that's very important for the council to recognize and understand. You brought up the two liquor stores, and I agree with you that they're mind-altering as well. As a matter of fact, just last night, I was hearing someone tell about that alcohol is number three in the United States for preventable deaths. Number two is dieting, I've got a problem with that. And then number one is tobacco, marijuana ingestible by lung things. So they're all problems. As a matter of fact, in New Mexico is number one, at least from what I heard last night, in alcohol deaths right now per capita in the United States, which is a sad thing. But when the state gave this to us, the state took a lot of rights or recognition of municipalities and local governments away by saying "you shall" instead of "you may" having the opportunity. So with that, much was taken from us, but there were three things that the state allowed for us to continue to keep, and that's time, place, and manner. And when a municipality has the opportunity, or a county, whoever that entity may be, to determine time, place, and manner, each one of those municipalities is gonna look at things differently. And I have no doubt, now this is not derogatory towards the town of Taos by any means, but I have no doubt that Taos would be more apt to possibly looking at larger hours. But looking at my constituency and the people that I represent, even recognizing, and I have grown through the years to better understand the medical end of this, I have, but understanding where the people in Roswell are living versus maybe the people in other places the state live, I think that this council looked at that hard and heavy, and determined to do, submit to what the state requires, but at the same time, try to keep the values that we believe the constituents, the people here, live. And I understand you're from out of town in Texas, but the folks here in Roswell at least, that I have heard from, wanted to have some very strict disciplinary standards for time, place, and manner when we put these things together. So I am not inclined at this point to add any more whatsoever to this. I understand where you're coming from, but at the same time, we're not talking about, you know, other entities. We're not talking about hotels, we're not talking about Home Depot. And so I recognize where we are, and I still believe that the council made the right decision with the time, place, and manner that was put in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Fisher, how many additional employees would you hire if you expanded your hours of operation?
About two.
Two is all?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So you keep talking about, you know, that we're hurting people by not allowing you to have longer hours because they need them for anxiety and stuff. I would like, I'm interested, what percentage of your business is actual medical versus recreational?
It varies in each city.
But here in Roswell?
In Roswell, we're up to forty, forty-five percent, I believe. I can double-check that, but it's past forty percent.
So you have more recreational than you do medical?
Yeah. And part of that is where Roswell's a little different, where we do have a lot of people coming to visit Roswell from out of state, and so that does, that changes things. The medical is a lot more in other cities, so I believe that does affect those numbers.
Okay, I yield.
Any further comments? Oh, excuse me. Councilman Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. I just tapped my button. When this was originally, and I was asked about this, this, your shop is a little bit different than some of the other shops, because you're not real close to residential, you're in an area where there is business driving in. And so the time, lighter time, didn't bother me as much, but when I went to look at the ten to ten, or the ten o'clock, it did kinda push that limit. But I also, you know, understanding our rules of why we can address so variance, it's really hard to say that it's a hardship, and it is one of the things that the state did give us control over. And so that's where I'm hesitating now as much. Your place of business is more commercial anyway, and so that's where I would lean further towards going ahead and granting it, but it doesn't, our rules don't let us do that for that purpose. And so I hate to say that I'm hesitating too on granting it. And so, but as far as your place of business, I appreciate it better than some of the others that are closer to residential and could be a nuisance, people driving up at ten o'clock at night. So, but like I said, I do yield, or I do hesitate to vote for it. I yield.
Thank you, Councilman Foster. Council Lady Arnold?
Just a quick question. Mr. Intima, can you actually repeat the rules regarding the quasi-judicial process?
Absolutely. So the city ordinance, we, state law, city more or less incorporated the verbatim language in state law, so undue hardship and unnecessary hardship, I'm reading the same, but it provides that there must, the petitioner must demonstrate extraordinary conditions which prevent the property owner from being able to comply with the zoning requirements, and if the strict application of the zoning ordinance would result in a peculiar, exceptional, or undue hardship as opposed to mere inconvenience upon the property owner.
Did that help?
Sorry, I yield.
Thank you.
I was thinking really hard on that.
Councilman Perry?
Just a question, I guess, from Mr. Mavers. I did understand, as I looked in here, that the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to forward the zoning case to the council without specific recommendation. Can you expand a little bit on why they chose to send it without? Normally, we get a recommendation from them to either uphold or to deny.
Wish Commissioner Henderson was still here, he could explain it probably. There was significant discussion about this request. Their concern was that, number one, the city council made it very clear that these were the hours of operation, the ten AM to seven PM, and then Sunday hours. And if you all remember, that was actually an expansion from the original hours. Originally, we were supposed to be closed on Sunday, and we expanded those hours very early in the process. In fact, I think it was, we were only two months along, and we expanded those hours. They were concerned that, number one, they didn't want to go, they didn't want to exceed their authority, first to begin with, and approve something that had not been vetted by the city council. So by the time the discussion was all done, it was recommended that we let you all set the standard, that they would send things forward with a neutral or no direct recommendation, and that the, whatever the city council felt was appropriate, then they would apply that set of standards to any future development that came along. But it was, again, since the city council was the one who established the original hours of operation, we felt that that final determination needed to come from you all.
Thank you. Any further comments? You know, there's one thing that's puzzling to me when I look at this whole thing, is that a lot of times that we turn around and we look at the state, and we've had a lot of references to alcohol in this discussion, but sometimes when I look at this, and the state let us decide all our remedies about whether or not we're gonna sell on Sunday, or how much, or what hours we're gonna sell. You know, I would just point out to the body that when you look at that, I don't exactly remember the dates and times which the chicken or the egg came first, but, you know, we didn't have Sunday sales and all of that until all of a sudden the state came up and gave us Sunday sales all the way. You know, you can buy alcohol in any facility you want on Sunday here, if you want. I mean, you can get it at Sam's now, you could get it at, you can get it at grocery stores. It used to be, you only could buy it at the base gate.
In a lot of places, it's now delivered as well. You're allowed to get it delivered.
Yeah, and they deliver. I mean, so when we look at this, sometimes it's, there's a level with me that goes about what is a competing, you know, a competing industry? But one of them, you have, you have almost, I don't know, I don't even know what time they start serving alcohol or selling alcohol on Sunday. It might be one o'clock in Sam's or somewhere, but I, you know, any other time, I imagine it's eight or nine o'clock in the morning, you start buying it whenever they open. And it goes all the way through eight or nine o'clock at night at Sam's. And so, and grocery stores, I don't know, they go on later than that, I don't know, I don't think any of them are open after ten, but seven-elevens are open where you can do it. So at some point in time, I think when you have businesses that are in the same, in competition in one way or the other with each other, then somewhere their hours of operation ought to be somewhat similar. If for the, if forty percent of the people, or sixty percent of the people are on medical cannabis, then maybe their hours of operation should mirror what pharmacies are. And if it's in recreational, maybe those hours should mirror what, you know, a liquor establishment is, or a sales, point of sales alcohol, or store is. I think somewhere we, the planning and zoning or something, should come up with some kind of an agreement about what hours are fair for a competitive process for that type of product. And I think, that's the way I think this should go. But then you turn around, and the people that don't wanna sell on Sunday don't have to. If Opagus Valley doesn't sell on Sunday, they don't have to. Now, I don't know what they do in other cities, but here in Roswell, that's what they do. So this is something really ought to either go back to the planning and zoning, and they should come up with us a recommendation about what is fair for someone selling some type of product in our community. And what is, you know, what's a competitive nature? It shouldn't just be one store can do it, whatever they want, it should be whatever, the hour should be whatever is competitive, and let the people pick that whatever they want, in my opinion. But, so with that, now we have Councilman Perry. So, Councilor Perry?
Just a quick question. I'm just, for clarification, I'm just looking for you. I think that we do that right now, Mr. Mayor. I think that we are consistent, and maybe Mr. Mavers can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we are consistent across the board for like product, all cannabis-related stores are on the same hours of operation. Is that correct, or have we favored some over another?
No, as of right now, all cannabis stores in town can sell both medical and recreational marijuana.
Times of operation.
But hours of operation of the eight stores that are approved in town, seven have accepted the hours of operation of ten AM to seven PM, and then the shorter hours on the weekend, on Sunday. The only one, as I explained when I was doing my presentation, that does not share those hours was the very first approval that we did, and that one, for Opagus Valley Production, again, their operation on Country Club is inside a medical office complex. They adhere to the neighborhood rules. So you have all those businesses in that little medical office complex that open at either eight or nine o'clock in the morning, and close by five or six, and they're all closed on Sunday.
My question is just to make sure that I was clear in understanding that all like product is being treated the same?
Yeah.
And that's, I just wanna make that...
With one exception, and...
Thank you.
The thing, we do need, and I feel like I need to provide this, the variances that went through before, okay, were designed to keep us on the right side of the law with the state of New Mexico. When we put together our ordinance, which established time, place, and manner rules, we put in there certain restrictions on the number of facilities, their proximity, their location in town. We already had operating medical facilities that pursuant to state law, we could not ask to move, we could not put out of business and everything else. So in order to stay compliant with state law, it would have been a significant hardship on those businesses, they would have had to move, and it would also have been, put us in a very bad spot with the state of New Mexico. So we went ahead and granted the variances to our ordinance in order to maintain compliance with that. The hours of operation, though, they were established in order to give a level playing field for every one of our cannabis operators.
No, no, that's all.
Councilman Helderbrand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I remember when we started down this road of trying to set hours, and it's, I don't like the involvement, you know, we need to be reasonable here. There's nothing magical about seven o'clock. There's nothing magical about five o'clock. We just decided as a body that those were magical numbers. We didn't hear from the public to say what they prefer. And I think this council should revisit that as a whole, to listen to what the public has to say about that, and not just this body. And, you know, ten o'clock, who's to say ten o'clock's the right time? That's your desire. Who is it for this body to say, no, ten o'clock is not right, nine-thirty's right? So I have a real problem with this whole ordinance of how we selected these hours to begin with, and how this should be revisited by this council, because we're restraining trade. When you elect to tell people when they can open and when they close, and I could believe that you probably do have some medical clients that don't have the ability to get there by seven, I don't know that, but there may be. And I believe up in the city of Albuquerque, they're now talking about home delivery taking place. So this whole cannabis issue is relatively new, it's gonna evolve over time, the state's gonna adjust, and municipalities are gonna have to adjust. Because when they threw it together, they left a few things out that probably needed to be regulated. Number one, there are only eight enforcement officers by the state of New Mexico for the cannabis, for the whole state. And, you know, I read an article this week that talked about some dispensaries selling illegal product. It's coming from California. And some places are selling and not reporting all their sales. And that's up to the state to regulate. So there's gonna be some changes that will probably take place, but I really do believe that this council should take a look at where we are and what we want to accomplish, and listen to the public to what they have to say. I yield my time. Thank you.
And I would like to say, you know, we're, you know, there's no loud noises, no loud music, I mean, we're not causing any harm. People are getting out of their cars, they're walking into the door, they're making a purchase, they're getting in their cars and they're leaving. they're getting in their cars and they're leaving, you know, and you see, you know, this was in the paper, you know, so I'm sure a lot of people saw that this was happening tonight, and there's nobody here against it, you know, and I think, I think that's, I think that's important to recognize.
Okay, thank you. Is there, thank you very much. I don't think there's any other questions. I don't see any more questions from the council. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak for or against this ordinance? Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak for or against this ordinance? Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak for or against this ordinance? Okay. Okay, so now we're back. We have a motion on the floor, a motion to approve by Councilman Perry, a second by Council Lady Arnold, if the clerk would call a roll.
Councilor Orapesa?
No.
Councilor Halverson?
No.
Councilor Foster?
No.
Councilor Haldenbrand?
Yes.
Councilor Best?
Nope.
Councilor Corn?
No.
Councilor Moore?
No.
Councilor Perry?
No.
Councilor Arnold?
No, with explanation.
Okay, by a vote of eight to one, the zoning case number 23-01 of variance has been denied. Council Lady Arnold, please plan her vote.
So I didn't feel that your request matched the rules of hardship under the quasi-judicial requirements. That being said, I think there's other ways to look at this, because I happen to agree with Haldenbrand, that we should not, but that it's all about timing. Okay, so my vote no was because the rules that were given to me, you did not meet, you did not meet those requirements in a variance. So that is what my vote was about, was that what you're asking me, does it fit what is being required of me? And I don't believe that it did. And that's why I'm saying, I think there's other ways to look at this, and timing is everything. Okay? I yield.
I'd say, thank you so much, and I would like the opportunity to come back and, you know, I will bring the rest of the industry with me to help sort out this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have the consent items. So we have, or we already passed those by the, what we didn't, we passed. Okay, so now we've done items. The items went through. Okay, next, we're on Resolution 27. Number 27. Okay, 23, this is all consent, okay. New business, regular items. Okay, item 27. We have a resolution, 22-78, consider the adoption of Resolution 22-78 for the Spring River Zoo fee structure. Yes, Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Oh wait, excuse me. We have a motion, we have a motion to adopt the resolution. Councilman Orpressa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, for the sake of the public that may not be aware, this resolution, 2022-78, appeared on last month's city council agenda, and after discussion by the council, it was determined this item needed further clarification, and therefore the council voted to refer the resolution back to the General Services Committee for further clarification. The General Services Committee met on January 25th, and staff presented their updated clarification to Resolution 2022-78, and their information consisted of Exhibits A1, B, C, and D, which is in our packet tonight. After discussion by the committee, a motion was made to recommend approval of Resolution 2022-78 to full council. However, that motion ended up in a two-to-two tie vote. Since this and previous councils have not been able to clarify or agree on a procedure of how to handle a tie vote at committee level, I believe it's important to cite our current rules of order, specifically Section 2-31 titled Rules of Order, which state, and I quote, "On any question unmentioned in this division, the regular parliamentary rules shall prevail." The latest edition of Robert's Rules of Order is hereby adopted as the official parliamentary rules and regulations of the governing body," end of quote. I reference this section because according to Robert's Rules of Order, a motion ending in a tie vote is considered a failed vote. However, I, as the Chair of the General Services Committee, decided to entertain a motion to send to full council this issue without a recommendation, and that motion passed on a four-to-zero vote. Therefore, Mr. Mayor, for purposes of discussing staff recommendation to adopt Resolution 20022-78, and in the spirit of following protocol of offering a positive motion, I move for adoption of Resolution 2022-78.
I have a motion by Councilman Orpressa, a second by Counselor Foster. Okay, so, okay, now, Mr. Wright, if you'd go ahead and...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. As Councilmember Orapesa had mentioned, we tweaked a few things with the committee, and they asked my recommendation for this, so we actually worked through the committee. So I'll just try to make this as brief as possible, and just let you know kind of where our discussions changed a little bit from last month. Once again, we looked at 90 zoos to kind of see where we stood in comparison to other zoos. The one slide that changed here is the Hillcrest Zoo in Clovis actually raised their rates starting at the beginning of this year, but we still fall pretty much in line with our other regional zoos as well. So when we look at all those comparisons, the average governmental-type zoo would run about $4.95 per admission, and we're definitely less than other communities our size for their zoo. Exhibit A1, this is the one that had a lot of questions before. So we're basically keeping the rates the same for our citizens and for our visitors. The change that we're doing from what we're currently is the senior military and student rate was $3, regardless if you were a citizen or not. We're just asking for a $2 discount for those categories, but our citizens will still be charged that $3 rate. And the group rate, right now, we're asking that just to apply to our citizens and not large groups that come in from out of the community. Also, the free days, which was a point of inquiry, we decided to keep it roughly the same as we currently have, which is the Friday, which is the first Saturdays of the month, and our zoo birthday. The one things that we asked is originally in our Resolution 22, 2072, is we had our senior days on Friday, but given a COVID, oh wait, in the resolution, it was for Wednesdays, but given a COVID, we switched it to Fridays. We would like to change that back to Wednesdays mainly because that's when school lets out early, and we figure that more senior citizens or grandkids could probably enjoy the zoo during those extra hours. So we're just kind of bringing it back in the line with 2072. We're also looking at reducing our membership rates to fall in more line with what we feel would be more marketing, more competitive, and reasonable. One of the things we want to point out is our reciprocity program, which is a free or discounted admissions agreement. We recently sent out a lot of letters out to zoos, and we have five, five new institutions that's willing to work with us, and we expect a whole lot more. So this will actually add value to that membership as well. So this goes back to those that are not considered residents or are locals as far as Artesia, Hobbs, and whatnot. They'll be able to buy a membership and be able to visit other zoos as well. So that keeps it at a reasonable rate for them if they wish to enjoy our zoo beyond our free days. The carousel rides and the train rides, those will remain the same. And really what we were looking at was with our rentals. I think the one thing we want to remind people is the rate of our party room would allow guests to come in and enjoy the party room, but also get free admission to the zoo, even though that's not required, we couldn't sit there and watch everyone come in and going. So we want to make sure that we're renting out the zoo for what would be the zoo room rate, as well as admission for a group of 20. But we also want to have the option of catering to our renters' needs with those rooms. So if there's anything specific that they want to add, if they want a zoo-themed party, and we're asked to provide that. If they buy like $100 worth of materials that we have to do ourselves to plan it, so plates, napkins, decorations, clowns, whatever we want to do there, to make it a party worth having, we want to charge them $100 plus $25, 25% admissions fee. So that allows us to kind of build a party around what they're looking at. And so that would be for our party room, as well as our after-hours and before-hours, the outside patio as well as the party room, how we broke that down, as well as also looking at how do we operate and rent out the zoo for the whole zoo. So we realize that that's also a value, and we've had interest, but we haven't had a rate for that before in the past. So it's kind of hard to be able to know what our business is if we haven't adjusted a rate for that. And I can tell you honestly, in the past year, I probably had four serious inquiries on that. Once again, just looking at our community comparables for rentable space, that we're falling pretty much in line with that. And our educational programs is kind of what we're looking at, to be able to charge for our camps and our other programs, tours, before and after hours as well with that. And we will, we will basically set the zoo fees with not increasing for more than 20% in a given year. So in case the supplies we use for those camps for our other programs increase, we want to make sure that our costs are met, but without increasing it so much that our interest parties wouldn't be able to plan accordingly. Looking at other community comparables with similar camps, where we fall pretty much in line or are very competitive within the community with a unique twist of what we have as well with those programs. So the staff recommendation is consider adopting Resolution 22-78, updating the Spring River Zoo's structure for admissions, memberships, rides, rentals, and programs as presented with Option A1, originally presented before full council last month, meeting and referred back to committee. And as Councilmember Orapesa stated earlier, it received a two-to-vote, but a four-to-zero to refer to city council with no recommendations. And I stand for questions.
Thank you. Councilman Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. On the reciprocity, you said you'd receive some positive feedback. Had we had any specific ones, zoos that wanted?
I do know there was a place, was it up in Ohio, the Dakota Zoo is also one that just recently came in today, but...
We currently have five other zoos. It's going to be the Alamogordo Zoo, Amarillo, Bright Zoo just came in today, Clearwater Aquarium out in Florida, and Dakota Zoo.
And it's just straight reciprocity, it's not...
It's a 50% discount we're offering, and they're giving it back to us.
Okay.
And we've, we've sent out 400 letters so far.
That's great, and that's a good advertising portion to it that I like. I believe in the past, we had a discounted rate for some of the friends of the zoo, the stuffed animals and stuff. Is that no longer on there?
We currently do not do that, but I'll let her speak on that one, as far as pricing.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
In the past, one of the membership privileges was a discount on purchases of the stuffed animals and the shirts and such.
Yes, we still have that. It's a 10% discount.
Okay. It wasn't listed here, and that's why I was asking about it.
Yes, it's a 10% discount on merchandise.
All right. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a handful of questions here. How much money have you accumulated with the present fee structure?
And since we started charging, or within the past calendar year?
Pick one.
I would say, well, I just did the numbers for the annual report. I would have to think really, really hard, but I think it's like 111 with admissions, and I think we had 183 for the in total revenue year. So that includes gift shop, any rides that we've done as well.
I think your assistant may have some numbers for you.
Admissions for the calendar year.
Okay. Admissions for the calendar year is 68, 798.
How much?
68, 798.
One more time.
68, 798.
That's what I thought. So what's the anticipated revenue with this new fee structure?
It should be, well, I mean, it should be roughly the same, because the fee structure for people coming in really won't change, except for our non-citizens on those senior military student rates. We have seen a 25%, well, no, 15% growth in our attendance last year. We would predict it to be a little bit less than that this year, but it will still grow, so I can't always tell you if it's a 50% people coming in that are residents or not.
Okay.
So there's a lot of variables in there to tell, to give you a correct answer.
Fair answer. So you have to have somebody at the gate collect these fees during your hours of operation, correct?
Correct.
And I think I asked you in committee the other day, what it costs to collect these fees. I'm not asking for the building, I'm just talking about the staff time that you expend to collect these fees.
What? $12.99 an hour. Seven hours a day. Times seven days a week.
$12.99 an hour for how many hours?
Seven hours.
A day.
A day.
Okay. And is the train operational?
No, the train has some safety issues.
The carousel?
That was running until last week when a major part broke on it.
So today, it's not running?
Correct.
Okay. I yield, Mr. Mayor, I'll do my math here.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilman Haldenbrand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to direct this question to City Treasurer.
Okay.
Because I think these numbers I saw off of the Tyler Report. Thank you, Ms. Davies.
I ran a report today for an income statement, and for the fiscal year, so for seven months, basically, the admissions at the zoo, we've generated $32,733. That's about $4,600 per month, and we're looking at $56,115 for the year. I went in and did cost, and I did talk to John when we got here tonight. I did the $12.99 per hour. I did two employees, but I did all the benefits with it. That's about $6,374.41 per month, for a total of $76,492.86 per year. So we've got a loss in just the admissions itself, when you're looking at the two employees and the income from the sales of the admission tickets, of $20,377.83 a year.
Does that include, the revenue side include passes and everything that we sell to the zoo?
I've got a total revenue here for fiscal year '23 of $60,892.30.
Yeah, so it's cost us more, we're spending more to receive those revenues than we're receiving, correct?
Yes.
Is what it looks like to me.
Yes.
So this 70, 30, it's got to be way off.
It is.
And so if we didn't collect admissions and discard those two jobs, we'd be ahead of the game.
It would be a cheaper cost to the city, yes.
Well, so we obviously haven't done a cost analysis and these kinds of things, because that's a losing proposition. And I understand getting it for free, that allowing people in for free and they don't take, you know, it's not as well-respected, and people kind of take things for granted when you get them for free. But I'm going to ask, how do we get the revenue up? How do we get there? And I'm going to ask that of Ms. Jennings as well. How do you get the revenue up? What are we doing?
There has been years, if not decades, of not keeping up with maintenance, not updating our facilities.
our facilities, public, out of the community influencing. So, that's where we have to really work on our rebranding and what we have to offer. So, those are the things that we're trying to work on. Obviously, if you're looking at just the admissions with those two people, we also have to understand that there's a gift shop component and the revenue that we make off of that, as well as our other guest services, mainly concessions and gift shop, that pull that in. It now starts to bring those into line with that. Having more merchandising, a bigger facility, which is what we're working on with that temporary building there, will also help increase that revenue. But, the train tracks themselves are 50 years old, and they're rusted out. So, Mike and I have talked about, you know, when we're doing things, we've got a plan. We know if it lasts 50 years, we should start replacing it the year 30. So, those are the things that we've been trying to do, but we're also trying to work within the budget, and the city has stated their challenges with the finances and whatnot. So, I proposed certain aspects with the, with the pond, and trying to work that out, and trying to meet those, those ideals and whatnot. It will involve some investment. So, someone brought up a bond earlier. I've seen lots of zoos, Kansas City has actually grown when they have passed a bond to improve that zoo, and that meant a lot of investment. And that also means stepping up as far as, trying to, trying to implement aspects of the master plan that was done in 2018. So, those are going to be our challenges, obviously, still marketing, trying to build that community trust. You guys have visited, many of you have visited a zoo and saw those improvements. It takes a little bit of time and money, and we try to do our best to hold ourselves accountable to the trust and the budget we have. So, we try to make those little improvements as we can with as much blood, sweat, and tears as we can put into it. The community people who are going there see it, but if you want to make a dramatic change, there needs to be a dramatic support. Even given our relative recent incident that happened at the end of December, the community has been overwhelmingly supportive of the staff and how hard they work to do what we can. And my response always is, we do what we can, we do the best with what we can with the support that we have. Imagine if we got more support, how much better could we be? Then that could also be a tourist attraction to bring it, bring in more people. They're spending twice what our citizens are paying to then change that up and then potentially do that. But it does take a while to resort. And I'll bring this back to one of my institutions I worked with previously in Mississippi. We were a 60,000-person community, had about 60,000 visitors a year. When we kind of looked at it, we were then made available through a different arrangement. Instead of being purely city-run, it was overseen by a different committee, different group. It went from 60 to now over 200,000 visitors a year, and they have made massive improvements and have grown. So, they've added attractions, they've added different exhibits, because there was an initial investment and funds made available to make those changes that actually became an attractant. Now, their location is closer to coast and halfway between Jackson and Biloxi, so there is location, location, location. But they made a major, major investment. They went from 60 to 200. So, we would have to look at that. We know that the UFO Museum has about 200,000 visitors a year. If we can even draw half of that, all of a sudden is now we can come more to that, better management. But we still have to have something draws them in. We are currently working with some designers to work on the farmland experience and a new entry. That will set the new standard for what we would have to offer. So, I guess that's about the best way I can explain it, is we have to fix what we've been given and upgrade it and try to do things that we can with what we have first.
I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
And what's happened, you're exactly correct. Lack of maintenance, lack of maintenance, lack of maintenance. And what you have to work with and try to get there, you're doing a great job with that. So, I guess part of what I'm saying is, you know, it's some money losing on this side of the deal, but I think we need to look at what kind of investment needs to be made if we're going to turn that into a big attraction. So, that's where I think we need to head with this, because just, the zoo is a business. It's a quality-of-life business. And either you invest in it, or it's just going to evaporate, and it's not going to get any better. And you're right, building that trust. But, Ms. Davies?
Well, and I can say that we sort of set Mr. Wright up for a, for failure with the budget that we gave him. We overstated revenue. We didn't have any contingency plan on covering that, and so for him to try to work within a budget that is, you know, at, at best, not worth having, it's put a bind on him, it's put a bind on us, and you all are going to see that next Monday, when we have the finance meeting and I talk about the financial state of the city, so...
Thank you.
And if I may, when we're talking about those two, as our ZAA mentor said, our operating budget is probably appropriate, give or take with cost of living adjustments, is appropriate for our size. The issue comes down to is fixing what's been there and not been fixed before. So, the operating side, it's the capital improvements, it's the upgrades. Last year, we added a butterfly garden. This year, we hope to add a tortoise feeding experience. These are $15,000 projects which will enhance, so we're trying to do what we can. And we do appreciate you guys' support, and thank you for asking a question, allowing me the opportunity to, to answer, and I appreciate your, your compliments.
Okay. Councilman Orpessa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, I agree with Ms. Davies, that we did set you up for failure. But I don't think we set only you up for failure. We set up the museum, the adult center, Parks and Recreation, because a 70-30 program, in my opinion, is a pie-in-the-sky type of situation, that we won't, I don't see us ever getting to that point. We may at some point, but I don't see it. And the other reason is that it takes money, takes money to get through to where you want to go for the, the other, the museum and the other ones. And, and this community needs a lot of work, especially in infrastructure. And so, I don't think there's enough money to be able to address all the, the issues and keep them at a, at a, at a, at a point where they are, you're able to make money on them. You know, I, I've, I voiced my opinion that as far as I am concerned, I, I would like to see the, the zoo open, you know, because I, in my personal opinion, it's so unfair that we're willing to lose money on, on, on some other departments and try to make it up with, like in your department and other departments as well. And I'm, I'm talking about the same issue that I talked about last month, about how this community lost around $2.1 million in, in tipping fees. And those tipping fees have never been received at the landfill. And I know there, there was a, a argument that those, those tipping fees would, could not be considered waived fees. But the reality is, the landfill never received those monies. And the other reality is, even if it came from, even if it came from the street department, any other department, the Parks Department, or whatever other department it came from, those fees will still be free of charge to the contractors, because you're talking about, about money from the city being given to a business. So, regardless of whether the money, the money is transferred from the street department, the water department, whatever department it is, to pay those $2.1 million in, in fees that were waived, or they were given free of charge, it doesn't matter. It's still city money. So, you know, I, I know that you and I disagree a lot on, on this issue, and this, again, it's nothing personal against you, because I do agree, you were set up to fail when you were brought in, because you're not given the resources to make the zoo what you want it to be. You weren't given the resources, and I don't think you will be given the resources, to be able to, to address the, the, the needs of the, the zoo based on the master plan, because the master plan called for something like $60,000 or, I, I don't remember the, the number.
I believe it was $34 million is what they were looking at.
34, 35 million dollars. And there is no way in the world that we will never have that kind of money unless, unless you have somebody from the outside being willing to donate that kind of money. You know, we are in a very poor situation when you compare us to Carlsbad, to, to Hobbs, Hobbs in particular, because they, they work together, the county, the city, the colleges, the schools, and then they have a medics foundation that pumps in a lot of money into their, their facilities. So, there's no way in the world that Roswell can ever compete with Carls, I mean, with Hobbs, because of, of the partnerships that they form, and then the number of grocery seed stacks that they bring in. They bring in almost twice the grocery seed stacks that we do. Carlsbad brings in more than twice. So, you know, I, I wish I could, could support you on, on the fee structure, but I can't. And I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question, and I don't know whether this goes to whom it goes to, but we're considering the adoption of the resolution for fee structure, Option A1. But my packet has B, C, and D. What are we approving here?
Go ahead.
Just, just A1, that's it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, because we were, last month, there was kind of like, we weren't really sure what had passed through committee, if it was the January and December extra free days. So, when I brought it back to committee, I separated out saying, either we get those extra free days, and plus some of those other things, or we go with this A1, which was my original proposal.
Okay. So, B, C, and D are already approved?
None of them are approved, because it all needs to come together. But I didn't have any questions on the other, on the other deals.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilman Julianne, and Councilman Alie de Halverson.
So, I've always been for fees, only because I think you need to make some money to help pay for the animals' care, but as Councilor Hildebrand mentioned, we're actually losing money at this point by charging fees. So, I don't know if we have options that we want, we can't vote on it tonight, but I don't know if this needs to go back to General Services to talk about eliminating fees and then eliminating those positions and creating a free zoo again, if we're losing money. So, I'm open to suggestions for that. Yield.
As stated before, the guest services people, they're interactive. That building will hold a person that handles the guest services and admissions at the same time. So, our guest services people also answer the phones. Our guest service people also deal with the party rentals that we talked about. They'll do the rides, they'll do concessions. So, let's just not make this solely about one person handling admissions. It's a team. So, we're all interactive. There's times when I might have to be pulling, pulling a shift in there once I learned a new system, so, that we're having. So, it's a team effort, so I don't want you to necessarily negate one for the other and just saying it's just about one person doing one task. We do it all. That's what we have to do at a small zoo.
Thank you. Councilman Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. And that's what I was going to say. The other thing about it is, and we keep saying 70-30 is unrealistic, but my other thing, saying is, it's a target. And the old saying is, if you have a target, that's the start. If you don't have a target, if you aim at nothing, you're going to hit it every time. If we don't know what we're striving to get to, then we don't have a goal. And the 70-30 is a goal. And having a fee structure of charging admissions gives them the ability to then start working towards raising the admissions, getting more people showing up, and then they start meeting that, going towards that goal. You take that away from them, they, they don't have any way of trying to raise the money. And, and so, making it worse something gets to a point where we can actually get it closer to that goal. 70-30, 70-20, I don't care what it is, you still have to have something that you're shooting at. And that, that, this gives them the ability to try to get there. And so, that's what, what I, I like about it. I fought for years to have a free zoo, but then I also saw that we weren't being able to invest anything into it. This gives them the ability to do that and gives them tools to work towards improving our zoo, and they've done a great job. And so, I think that we need to move forward with this. I yield.
Okay. Council Lady Halverson.
So, and I agree with you. That's why I've always been okay with fees, but at this point, it looks like we're not making any money. And I don't know, I guess it's up to Mr., like Mr. Hildebrand said, what are we going to do to try to increase, you know, so more people come in, so we actually make a profit? I'm not saying make a profit, at least break even, I'd be happy.
Okay. Council Lady Arnold.
I'm sorry, I actually was debating. Okay, so I just want to make this point. I actually hear what Councilwoman Halverson is saying. I like this new structure that you've created, okay? I, I actually like the idea that you provide opportunity for renting the place out. I think there's a lot of new nuances that you have created with this fee structure, so I do like it. However, I do think that there needs to be consideration in the future about having a conversation about the process, and if it's fiscally responsible, if it could be done differently, because I kind of agree, we are, you know, I understand they have other value, but just an assessment of it is always a great idea, okay? But I do love what you've done.
One of the challenges is, and I showed several of you guys kind of how I do my budget tracking, we don't have a lot of data. So, the zoo has been its own independent department under Public Affairs for not quite full two years now. So, hopefully by year number three, we'll see our trends and kind of be able to make those adjustments, but it's really, really hard if I don't have the data that we're collecting now.
Okay. Now, looking right along, looking down the road, there's a couple of things we have to understand. I wondered on this, on this recommendation, is there a space in here somewhere where you can have the symphony at the zoo without charging them any money in this, in this section, A1? Is that possible? We've always had a symphony at the zoo and stuff. It was good. I think it was good for our community. And I don't know, under this deal, if they have to pay for all that stuff, the symphony doesn't have any money either.
So, one of the, one of the good things that we have, we're actually talking with some of the, some of the events that we're planning on doing at the zoo, put them on a free day. That way, we're still within, we're still within the, kind of that parameter, but we can schedule it for a free day as well. But yeah, if we would potentially have to waive it, I guess I could figure out, we would have to come to council next year with a series of dates and just ask for those amendments to add those additional free days or those type of options.
All right. We need, we need to take a recess for about 15 minutes. If you'd please come back. Thank you.
... property taxes than we have. We do not have those kind of revenues in Chavis County. And our counties get that kind of money from property tax. We don't get it because we're basically funded on grocery receipts tax. And so, there's a huge difference on the ability of the counties south and east of us to fund things. And we have some real structural limitations in our county government, the way we're set up, and our assets that we have in taxable property, and that they have, and billing on grocery receipts tax. They get things that are billed on there that have, that are billed out through their community, that they get significant more fees. And when you look at drilling 24 wells at 18 or 14 million dollars apiece, it's 300 million dollars that somebody has to pay grocery receipts tax on, and they get a part of it. There are a lot of changes, so we have to look at that. But being what it's made, we have, one of the things we have at this zoo, I think, we need to make sure that we can always have the symphony in the park because that brings multi-generations together, and it brings a lot of different clashing cultures together by having that facility to have that. And when we have a symphony at the zoo, I don't know that we should necessarily have either one of the agencies that are both always struggling for money necessarily make money off one or the other, but it's a good clash to have. One of the things, when you look at that zoo, we have some significant needs that have to be met immediately. And I think when you have the carousel that's down, that has to be fixed. The train track has to be fixed. You know, we have a need for at least, probably, really, you could use, if you had 100 people that could give 5,000 bucks, it'd give them enough money to really kind of put the zoo back on some kind of level footing. I mean, the needs are significant. So sometime, we have to figure out how to have a fundraiser or something at the zoo to put it back in workable order. I mean, we had, one of the reasons we had to run a water line over there, if you look, is because the well that was on that side collapsed, and they had to do another well. Or, I mean, we didn't take care of it right, whatever, and so we had, we had to do another well there. That's all stuff that, you know, with proper maintenance, maybe that would have worked. We don't historically do a lot of maintenance in our, in our city. You know, we have to look at where we are all the way through. And, you know, when we look at the budget and how we did, we talked about the 70-30, and we go all the way through this stuff, and you look at it, there's some real problems with our budget structure, and I'm hoping Mr. Corn can get this under, under, under hat. When you go through the way we've done our budget, if, so, we go, we have an accident, we have a lot of hail that happens all the way at the airport, and we get lots of money because we have lots of money, lots of billing at the airport. We have all these problems that happen out there, and you, and you damage a bunch of roofs. Well, you get paid for the roofs, and it comes in, if it goes into last, if it comes in in last year, then that money's in there. If you don't put it in a separate line item and tie it to fixing the roofs that were damaged, what happens? That money then comes in, and it's written into the budget, and we spend it as 2 million dollars of new money, and no, and we still have the obligation to pay the 2 million dollars for the roof, or else we can't get our roofs re-insured. Things like that appear to me to have happened a lot in our last budget. And I think that we should look at that. I think we have some real financial issues that are creeping up, and it's maybe at a little, a lot faster pace than we would like. But I think we really have to, really have a lot of the people look at what's going on, and the budget people understand that there's not a lot of room for overtime, period. You know, you're going to have to know that. We're going to have to sit down and cut this budget real tight to make it. And I don't, it, it's just, you know, it's, it was really, was upsetting to me to find out if we had, if we collected money on roof insurance, that we don't have a line item that goes in to fix the roofs. Because all we did was put that in the budget we did last year, last year's budget. We carried it over into this coming year, and we spent it like it was new money, and there was no line item to say that there, the debt is there to fix the roofs. And so, you know, for a lot of us, I think that was somewhat that, it wasn't really explained that we had those kind of liabilities in, in our budget plan when we went through them. And so, just looking at that, I would, what we do on this bill, we have a motion to adopt it, and if we pass that motion, we'll adopt the new setting. If not, we'll go back, and then this will have to, we just have so many issues that have to go back and look about whether we're charging for the parks, or whether we charge for Little League, whether we charge, what we've done to the zoo, what we've done to the museum, you know, all of them, all these places. The 70-30 is not working. And we all know it, but it's working a lot worse than what we thought it was working. So, you know, it's just, it's a wreck. I, I don't know where we end up, but we probably need to have a resolution in here to come up with something to address the problems of the 70-30 plan and where to go. And that for all those facilities, because nobody's making the money that we, that they were hoping they were making. And when we budgeted on, on losing a little bit of money, it's been twice that, looks like. So, there, there appears to be a lot of issues. I would just tell you, I would probably, I think that on the, on this zoo, one of the most important things we have to do is get, you know, 100 people to give 5,000 or something, or we've got to get 200 people to give 2,500 something. We have got to fix the train, and we have got to fix, keep that Mrs. Stevens carousel running. And, I mean, that's, to me, that's some of the most important things there. Not to me, I'm not discounting any of the facts that what we've had with PETA and everybody else, and all those ladies, when they call you and tell you how bad we've been doing at the zoo. And, you know, nobody's ever been here, they don't know anything about us, but they'll all tell you. And I think, I think you've actually done a good job, Mr. Wright, on, on the things that you've done trying to get the butterflies in and everything else. I think you're doing a good job. I don't, I don't question your abilities in any way or shape or form. We just have a facility with, it's like it was told to me, no, you know, the last person to have that zoo up and running real good was Mr. Burus. But, you know, that tends to be what we always know Mr. Burus does, is he gets things up and go, gets it working. And he always has, and he's, he's just that, a guy that has that ability. But however this vote comes out, I would just like to say that I think that, together, I think we as a council need to sit down and see what, what we can do to raise some money for that, for the, for the train and the carousel, to make sure it's running this summer, and do, fix the wells and whatever, and get kids fishing back over there as soon as we can, whatever we have to do. If we can have some kind of a GoFundMe page or something for people to see if we can't raise at least 20, $250,000 to get the zoo back up and running where it's, it's somewhat of a feasible thing. And I'm, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying that's where I feel we are, and it doesn't care, you know, I'll, if you guys have any ideas, please call me, and we'll sit down and figure out what we can do to try to get this thing going. And I do, I appreciate your comments and coming back. I don't know how this vote's going to come out, but luckily, I don't have to vote unless it's five to five. And the chances are, it won't be five to five. It might be four to four, and I have to vote this time. But, anyway, so, that's all. Okay, now, we've talked for this for a long time, so let's get on to something. Mr. Perry, Councilman Perry.
Just a few things. Where are we at with the farmland experience?
We, I'm sorry, I'm still a little foggy from-
That's okay, and I'm sorry you're not feeling well tonight.
I'll make it through. Um, late January, we had NCA and their consultant come by. We did a little pow-wow. We went through a lot of stuff. Tomorrow, I'm supposed to do an online Skype with them where we kind of nail it down. One of the things that was actually asked, and I'll ask a man to kind of help refresh my memory, is the consultant was asking, how many people come through in a day? When, what hours are coming through today? Because that's going to help design our flow so that we know, do we need one ticket booth or two ticket booths? So, we're being asked very strategic, critical questions to help with that design process. Forgive me if I can't remember the date right now off the top of my head, but I think like the 20th, they will be in town to do a secondary visit and whatnot. I am currently trying to reach out, and I'll put this out to everybody, is certain members of the community kind of be a community sounding board for what the community would want in backup. Because it can be all the things that I think, or what the zoo people think. But we would like to hear from people from the county, from people from the city, businesses, other nonprofits, other tourism, things like that, to give us a real community feedback that will help in that designing process.
If I could, how much did we, did we receive as a benefit when the factory helped us with that? Do you remember what that amount was?
Oh, I've, I've-
How much?
I'm hearing three.
From, from Lepre, from Lepreino?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's a million dollars, but it's over a 20, 30-year period.
Correct.
Right. So, it's not a, it's not a million dollars upfront. It's over a long period of time.
When I, when I started, I heard two. So, I don't, I haven't seen anything, one way or the other.
I just wondered where we are on that. You know, there is the possibility for that private-public partnership, and we've seen that as a potential possibility just through this one company and others over a long period of time. But I, I think I do agree with what the mayor said, that we do need to maybe consider some of those outside sources. But I think that we've proven that, and, and we do have some great things coming up that's going to help to attract folks in with that experience. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion for adoption of, of Councilor Pressa, second by Councilman Foster, for adoption, option A1, resolution 22-78.
Mr. Mayor, your mic, please. Your mic, please.
Thank you. Sorry, my assistant missed it. Okay, so we have, for, we have a motion to, to adopt this by Councilman Pressa, seconded by Councilman Foster, resolution 22-78 for the Spring River Zoo fee structure option A1, is what we're voting on. So, if the clerk would call the roll.
Counselor Oropesa?
No.
Counselor Halverson?
No.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand?
Aye.
Counselor Cornvest?
Yes.
Counselor Corn?
No.
Counselor Perry?
No.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
You spoke too soon, Mr. Mayor.
All right, well, well, I will, I'll vote yes.
Motion passes five to four.
Okay, next we have, okay, next we have item-
Excuse me, Mayor. It fails, it's a resolution.
Oh, so it failed?
Yes.
Oh, it has to have six, has to have a majority.
That is correct.
I'm sorry, so I didn't even help it. But I did have a heart. Some of you others didn't, but, I'm sorry, I can't challenge the way you think. Okay, so next we go to item 28, resolution 23-07, consider a resolution adoption number 23-07, approving a sister city affiliation with, with the community of Koznyski in Poland. And we have a special guest here today, but, so we will go to Councilman Hildebrand to make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's with great pleasure that I move that we adopt resolution 23-07, a resolution approving sister city affiliation with the commune of Koznyski, Poland.
Second.
We have a second, and a second by Council Lady Halverson. Okay, next we have Mr. Eintama. Could you like, did you have anything you would like to address on this issue?
No, Mr. Mayor, I believe there's a short video, and then I'll hand it off to Councilor Halverson.
Okay. Thank you. If we would run the video, please. Shall the record reflect our videographer was asleep? Oh, there he goes. Thank you. And with that, while we're, while we're here, I want to turn this, oh, is your more? Uh-oh. Okay, I was gonna, welcome, we have a special guest here tonight. It's here, who is from Koznyski? Well, I'm never going to get it. But, anyway, he's here. And this is one thing, it's, it's nice, it's, that part of the world is going through an awful lot of strife right now, and it's, it's really, it's really nice that I think that we, this all shows up now, because I know the people of Poland are helping, helping the people in Ukraine an awful lot, and I think that, that's, it's marvelous. And I, I'm glad we're doing this. And so, I'll turn this over to Council Lady Halverson.
So, Father Jarek, if you would please come up and give us your full name, and your address, too, I guess, for, for the needs, all that.
Yeah. Give her, there, give her your address in Poland, too. So, let her, let's let her see if she can write it.
Sounds good, because I saw some places where I grew up, and even I dated there with, you know, with my girlfriend when I was not a priest. So, good evening. And dear Mayor and council members, my name is Father Jaroslaw Nowacki, which most people know me as Father Jarek, and I am the pastor of Assumption Catholic Church. Also, this year, it is an honor for me that I'm more in our town, because I am Roswell Leadership member, student. So, it is very special. And yes, I am originally from the small town Kozienice, and it's near like 70 miles from Warsaw. This video should have a lecturer, and I think that there was lecture very soft, it is why we had problem to hear, and maybe this subtitles was too small to read. But this video also is available on YouTube, so others can watch. And Kozienice, you know, are just like one hour far from Warsaw. And it is, Kozienice, it is very small town, but with beautiful tradition. And one Polish king built the palace, and another king, his son was born. And Kozienice have some agriculture and some international companies. And this time, you know, in Poland, there is a lot of refugees from Ukraine. Also, in Kozienice is about couple hundreds refugees. I know that the, the city offered two hotels to welcome refugees from Ukraine, and many families opened their houses. And so, it is very personally for me, this project about being the, this sister twin between Roswell and Kozienice. First, when I grew up, always we heard what's happened in 1947. Always, it was my dream when I was a teenager, just come to visit Roswell. And you know why? And especially one side. And I came to US to serve as a priest in 2010. My plan was that I am coming for two, three years. My boss had a different plan. I'm a little over than 12. So, six years I served in Virginia, and then I was invited by Bishop Cantu to come to serve in New Mexico. But first, I was invited, just come and visit New Mexico, because it's completely different than Virginia. Believe me or not, I remember, it was 2016, I arrived in El Paso. One priest picked me up from the airport, took me to the center, and I met Bishop for five minutes, and he says, "Okay, Father Jarek, so tomorrow is Tuesday, your first day off." I was just a visitor. "And just, we'll give you a car and just travel." So, my first visit was Roswell. So, I came just to see our town, and like for a couple hours. And then I came back to Las Cruces. I was assigned as a pastor in Silver City for one and a half year, and from Silver City, I came to Roswell. So, this is my dream from my childhood, and being a teenager, it's not a longer a dream. It's my daily life, because I am already serving in our town five years. I started my, my life as a resident in 2018, January 4th. So, over five years. And, yeah, so it is an honor to be here in front of- And yeah, so it is an honor to be here in front of you. And also, you know, I'm glad that you saw this short video about the beauty of my hometown. There is really a lot of beauty. We have wonderful young people who really would like to come and visit and learn, you know, US. So, I see this platform, you know, for big cooperation, and I know that everything that is new needs to have baby steps. And there is one barrier, the ocean. Maybe it will be very hard to swim, because sharks, et cetera, right? But with now our new plans, and we have international airport, by the way, now in Radom, so very close to Kozienice, like half hour, there in April will be open international airport. And but Warsaw is still very close, just one hour. So, if we'll have already, maybe next year, some of our students that will be ready, go to Kozienice, I am ready to be guide tour. And so, yeah, I hope that this project will go forward. I know that Kozienice Council, they already voted, and they are fully in, and they see this beautiful future, you know, to cooperate with our town. So, if you maybe have some questions, maybe I will know answers.
Well, okay. Father, do you think it'll be okay, if we've seen your video and everything, is it okay if we... Maybe could we go out to the Pecos River and go for a swim?
I think it's a great idea. First, you know, like, you know, I know that many people loves hunting, and around, you know, Kozienice, we have beautiful forest. Polish kings hunted there, so you can imagine how amazing is the place. And so, yes, we have beautiful river, we have some lakes, and we have very nice sports center. So, yeah, when you will be ready to go, just let me know when, and we can go.
Well, on a good flood day, on a good flood day, we have about as much water as you have. So, you know, Council Lady Halverson.
I just want to thank you for coming in for this opportunity. I do want to point out, in the packet is the agreement from the city. We're probably all gonna butcher Kozienice.
Kozienice.
Yeah. But I do appreciate it, and I just want to point out that there is a agreement from Poland in the packet.
Thank you so much.
Any further comments? Well, thank you. Thank you, Father Jarek, and thank you so much for coming, and, you know, I'm looking forward to this. I think the council, we have a number of sister cities and around it that we've had in Mexico. This is by far the furthest away we've had, and but I appreciate the opportunity to share friendship and fellowship with the people of Poland, just like I hope they enjoy the people in New Mexico and the aliens that have stopped to visit and stayed. We're all here to enjoy each other, so thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward to us. You and Juliana have done a wonderful job, and I look forward to signing this, assuming that we will pass that. So, if there are no further comments, then the clerk would call the roll for the adoption of Resolution 23-07 Approving Our Sister City Affiliation with the City of Kozienice, Poland.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand?
Aye.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Corn?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Counselor Perry?
Aye.
Counselor Arnold?
Absolutely.
Okay, by a vote of... By a vote of eight, affirmative, and none, and the negative, Resolution 23-07 Approving the City of Kozienice, Poland as our sister city has duly passed the chambers. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next, we have ordinance 23-03, Considering Authorizing to Advertise for Public Hearing on Ordinance 23-03, Article 60, The Roswell Zoning Code Relating to Signs. Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we consider authorizing to advertise for a public hearing on proposed ordinance 23-03, Amending Article City of the Roswell Zoning Code Relating to Signs.
Second.
We have a second. We have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, seconded by Council Lady Arnold. Mr. Intima.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a... Counsel... Some background here. Counselor Halverson pointed out that the sign ordinance that we presently have in our zoning code does not necessarily match up with state law. I decided to double-check that, and lo and behold, she was correct. There... So, this is two measures that put us in uniformity with the state law. State law only applies as far as signs go on second and main, but that's the vast majority of the signs, so we thought we should be in compliance. So, the first thing is that this will allow video elements on on-premise signs. This does not change where signs are allowed, simply that this... Where the signs already are, if they are advertising on-premise, which means for use on that land, specific to that land, and only for that land, video elements may be used. Second, it makes the current time of five seconds under the city code that a picture must be still to eight seconds, which is what the state regulation requires. That's all I got.
So, thank you. Any questions for members of the council? Yes. Now, will this... Will this stop? A lot of times when we have signs that are up there in town on banks and everything else, they all say, "Okay, the state championship team is coming in tonight." Will that stop any of that kind of...
No, they can't use... They can't use video elements unless it's for a public service use, so, you know, fire warning or something like that. But yeah, congratulatory messages, anything like that, totally acceptable.
But it has to be static, it can't be video.
Right. Yeah, the state rule is pretty clear that the use must be on-premise if it's video.
Okay. And this makes us concurrent with state law?
Yes.
Okay. Saying no further. Is there anyone in the audience who's going to speak for or against this public ordinance? We're just advertising for it, that's right. So, okay, so if there is no objection, or do we need to vote on this one, too? Okay, so we need to vote on... We need to vote on this, too. So, okay, if the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand?
Aye.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Aye.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
By a vote of eight, affirmative, none, and the negative, item 29 is duly passed the chambers. Next, we go... Item 29 is the ordinance to... For advertising the hearing. Next, we have item 30... Excuse me. Item 30A, which is item 10 in your book. And that is item 10 is the... Consider the approval of capital outlay funds in 2016-42-41-817504 to be reallocated to the Recreation Aquatic Center for locker rooms, foyer, and gym on item 10, page 29. So, that would be by Counselor Corn. You know, we pulled this from the agenda. Do we want to vote on it now, or is it...
No, we just moved it from consent to...
Okay, so we have...
To discussion items.
To discussion items, okay.
Request.
Councilman Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've lost my place here. I consider... I move that we consider approval of capital outlay funds. Wait a minute, are we on the generator?
Yeah, this is a generator in installation.
Well, but they've got the... They've got the generator up on the screen, so...
Can we do that one?
Well, it says...
Can we do that one first? Because it'll help with the other one.
Well, the generators... Item 10 says it's 11. Yeah, so, okay, well, I'm just saying that...
Just tell me where you want me to start, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, the generator is on...
There we go.
Is on item 10 on the thing, so we just need to consider the approval... We need to do item 10 first. You want to do 11 first?
All right. This is 30A. So, Mr. Mayor, council, I move we approve capital outlay funds, and there's a big number there, to be relocated to Recreation Aquatic Center for emergency generator installation at the center for $298,488.83.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Corn to reallocate that on item 10.
Are we... I'll second, but I think I'm seconding item 11.
Well, it's somewhat confusing in the...
That's what's on your screen.
One's on locker rooms.
I'm trying to be versatile.
The gener... I understand that. Item 10 is in the book, when you look at item 10, it talks about...
Locker room and the foyer and the gym.
And the generator is in, the generator installation is in...
Is item number 11, which should be 30B.
Yeah, on page 29 says 210.
29 is the correct page that we need to be on.
Okay, so that's the capital outlay money. The generator is quoted in there, leaving a balance of 251.
Well, okay, just tell me... I'll clean up my motion if you tell me exactly which item you want me to consider, Mr. Mayor. Actually, to cut the argument short just a little bit, if I could...
Okay.
Both these items were approved. Since they've been approved, we've got a big problem at the rec center. Had to shut down the pool area. We know we've got a problem. We don't have a real good idea of what it's going to cost us to fix it, and quite frankly, if we can repurpose this money, maybe the only money we've got to meet that emergency need. And we're presently shut down. Who knows how long we're going to be shut down, because there's got to be some testing done, there's got to be some parts found. I'm told that they've located the parts, and they're allegedly on the way, and they have sufficient in their operational side to cover those costs. But we haven't even had any real meaningful discussion with anybody about the mold remediation that's going to have to occur. And because that stuff, once it gets started, one end of the building, it'll take over the whole sucker in no time. And so, we need to... I would ask the council, however, whatever way you want to do it, to get these back to finance. I'm not trying to hold up any of this stuff, it's just that we've got a bigger need that we need to address. And I hope J&amp;G Electric, who is bitter on the emergency generator, I hope delaying it for a month won't get us out of any kind of conflict with their contract, because we prob... We need to get that done, too. And that's the predicament we're in, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. If I might, just item... Item 10 on the calendar we're talking about is for $251,511. And included in that is the amount of money, it was $298,000 for the generator, which is item 11.
Right.
That's the way I understand this. So, item 10 is talking about the $250,000 that's left after they pay the generator. It's repurposing that amount of money.
Correct.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
So, that's... So, everybody knows, the generator is still item 11, and it's just the way it was worded here.
Somewhat confusing.
Yes, so...
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Corn, if I could jump in here, I think you summarized things excellently there. Our mistake, those two should have been swapped when they were put in the packet. So, actually, we needed to discuss 11 before 10, but with this new information of what happened yesterday afternoon, I had to shut down the pool, there's still a lot of questions I don't have answers for. I got contractors pulling samples, roof samples. We've got to find this dehumidifier before we can ever abate any mold, because it's not going to do us a bit of good to abate mold that's going to grow back tomorrow without this humidifier operating. We're looking for some rental right now to put in there temporarily to stop the growth of that, but we got it shut down. We don't know what this is going to cost, so staff is in agreement if the council chose to postpone this item until we get some more answers on what this is actually going to cost us. What's it going to take to get this back in service? We don't have those answers yet.
That's where we're at, Mr. Mayor.
Would the staff's recommendation be to change...
So...
Would be to postpone items 10 and 11?
Both of them, yes, sir.
I don't want to postpone. I want to get them back into finance, Mr. Mayor. So, if that would please you, I'd make a motion that we move pool items 10 and 11, whatever order you want to do it in, and move it back to finance. Well, I promise, Mr. Fuentes, that's the first two items on our agenda at our next meeting, period. And also, the mold abatement, hopefully we'll have some answers by then. But those three items, one, two, and three, okay? Because I don't want to hold this up, it's just that we've got a real emergency here that we've got to deal with, and it has to deal with health and safety. And we got to deal with it, and this is all the money. I checked with our treasurer, and I said, I asked her, because I've been looking at her mid-year books now for a couple of weeks, and I don't know where the mon... We don't have any excess money. We just don't. And we got another half a year to worry about, as it is. So, this is all the money I've got to put toward this project that knocked on our door the other day, and we're going to have to deal with it, and this is... We're going to have to repurpose this money, bottom line.
And we might have to have a special meeting of the council to reauthorize that is...
If that's...
When we find a solution.
If we get proper coordination and documentation from all the parties that are involved with this thing, and that's what the mayor wants to do, I will personally call you and have a discussion. Maybe you'll be at the finance committee meeting, so you'll... I won't have to waste a phone call. But I'm not... Not my purpose, or I don't think this council's purpose, to slow any of this stuff down. We just need to... We got another issue we need to deal with.
Counselor Gordon, would you withdraw your motion that you...
I'll be glad to withdraw my motion and make a motion that we refer items 10, 11 back to finance committee, and it will be the first now three items on the agenda.
Point of order.
Councilman Perry.
If I could just... I think if we take these separately, and because they really do need to be dealt with separately, it's cleaner, and I don't think there's really a need to withdraw a motion, because at this point, you're just...
Right. So, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, so we have a main motion, the subsidiary motion. So, you would make a referral without withdrawing your motion, and then we move to the next item. Motion to present, then refer would occur.
Correct.
So...
I agree.
That's the way to send it back parliamentary, why?
Okay.
Okay, so you want a motion to present item 10, and then defer it?
Yes.
So, I'll make that motion. We present item 10, and according to what I've got here, that's dealing with the locker rooms, foyer, and the gym. Everybody together on that?
Sending back to committee.
What? Back to... No, my motion is to do it according to council. We're going to have to get that part done, and then we can do the referral part.
Right. So, you'd move to approve, and then the subsidiary motion to refer.
So, I need a second.
Second.
We have a motion to approve item 10, which is the capital outlay funds for the aquatic center for the everything except the generator, and that motion, have a motion to approve, and a second by Council Lady Arnold.
No, Halverson.
Or Halv...
You did? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm in trouble now.
And second by Council Lady Arnold to approve the capital outlay fund. And second by Council Lady Arnold, to approve the capital outlay funds to re- be appropriated and referred? Or it has to be?
So now there should be a motion to refer.
Now I'll make the motion to refer item ten back to the Finance Committee and make it, well, I don't know how that's gonna come out, but make it one of the first three items under consideration, but.
Yeah, but we don't know what's coming.
Second.
Back, made it back.
Okay, now we got the.
And then you have a.
Now we vote on referral.
And, and then to refer it, then to Finance Committee.
Right.
Correct, and a voice vote's fine.
Okay, so we have that motion.
And I think we can do.
Do you still wanna talk? Okay, Councilman Hildebrand.
Mr. Fuentes, are we allowed to reallocate that capital outlay money for something to this effect?
Mr. Mayor and, and Councilor Hildebrand, the, these are funds that are within the Recreation Fund, uh, and the purpose of those funds were in part used for, uh, the construction of that recreation, so, it's all within that, that capital outlay. Is that correct? Um, and some of these funds that are in the, uh, Capital Improvement Fund, I stand corrected, they're, they're in twenty, fund twenty-six oh one, and they can be reallocated.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I think we can do a voice vote unless somebody else has got some questions, I'm getting confirmation from the.
Seeing no further questions, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, okay, item ten is referred back to Finance, and then we have.
Mr. Mayor, on item eleven, the purchase of emergency generator and installation of the Rosal Recreation and Aquatic Center, I move it to be the next order of business.
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, we have a motion to make it the next order of business, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
Well, no, 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 you're in a hurry.
No.
Hold on, I'll get you there, if you'll just.
I know, but you have to make it the next order of business, now it's before us.
Yeah, oh, okay, so now you want me to?
So now, it's, I mean, that's the motion you made, to make it the next order of business, so now it's before us.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I move that we send item number eleven, the purchase of merchant generator and installation of Rosal Recreation Aquatic Center, back to Finance and make it first order of business when we get there.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Corn to, to, uh, approve this and send it back to Finance, and by Councilman Corn, and a second by Council Lady Arnold.
I'm not gonna get in that deep again.
Is there any further discussion, Councilman Foster?
Thank you, Mayor, the one question I have is, we first, um, we first, uh, had a bid, or not a bid, but we estimated that the cost was gonna be five hundred and fifty thousand, uh, we got a, a great bid of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, and that's my biggest fear, that, that we, we hold it back a month, and then we find out that the next time we, we have a chance to buy a, a generator, it's at five hundred and fifty thousand. Um, that's, so, do we, does anybody know that, I mean, the estimate that we first got for these generators was, was five fifty? And, um, and so when we got this one for two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, is, is that the going rate, or was this just a great deal? And then do we lose this in thirty days?
The price, the price will change, um, minimal, um, it changed, we got a, a bid earlier in the year, and it changed by less than five thousand dollars, and we got our second bid when we submitted for this price. So it will change, um, in thirty days, um, but not from our vendor, it's gonna be from the manufacturer of the equipment. It's just, we're just dealing with, with price changes on equipment and materials and those kinds of things, so it will change on the manufacturer's end, not on our vendor's end.
Okay, so that, that was, my biggest fear was, I mean, the estimates that we've always been told by these sized generators was close to a half a, half a million. And so when we got this one, I was thinking it might've been just a special deal, or, or something, but if, 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 this is around what they're normally going for now, but I know that everything is increasing in prices.
Yeah, we're getting this one directly from the manufacturer, so that is, is helping us, as a municipality, they do work with us in that way, but we're getting a, a really very good deal on it.
And that's, see, and that, and that's what I'm scared about, that, that, we're gonna, we need this money for, for this remediation, maybe. We might be able to get it from the other proportion of it, but then it's gonna end up costing us a couple of hundred thousand more eventually. Um, so that's, I know, it's a maybe, we don't know for sure, but I want us to make sure we know that decision, we're making that decision, and that it may, the cost of it may be a lot more. Um, because the thing about it is, these are thing, we need emergency generators for this facility, we need it for the, for the convention center. We need to get these in, and, um, and delaying it scares me, um, so I hesitate to, to pull this one off. I.
Okay, thank you, seeing no further comments, uh, all those in favor of, uh, removing this bill back from, uh, from the table, approving it, sending it on back to, sent it, or to the Finance Committee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Can we have a show of hands with the noes? We have noes, Councilman, uh, Foster and, uh, Corn and Best, and, uh, and that's it, that, so two, we have two negative votes. Okay, next we have, uh, to consider the approval, submit revised two thousand and twenty-three legislative request for the amount of capital outlay appropriations, uh, Councilman Corn. Oh, is that, no, no, we already did that, I'm sorry, so next we're on item sixteen, I'm sorry. Item sixteen. Item sixteen is to pull the approval of, of scope of work for the Special Audit Services, RFP twenty-three dash zero zero one. Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, this was a scope of work, was coming down from the State Auditor's office, it's very cut and dry. So therefore, I will not make this motion, it was already approved on the consent agenda, and there's nothing to discuss. So I will not make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Nope, uh, no, they pulled it off on the consent agenda, so.
No, I'm not gonna make the motion that we consider the approval, so somebody else can make that motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Corn.
Mr, Mr. Mayor, I move that we go forward and, um, advertise an RFP dealing with the Special Audit Services, and RFP twenty-three oh one one.
And we have a, a motion by Councilman Corn for approval, a second by Councilman, Council Lady Best. Uh, is there any further discussion? Now. I, I'm sorry, I wasn't in legal when they did, it's the Attorney General sent, or the auditor sent down a scope of work that they said for us to practice, am I correct? And this, by moving this to the consent, or taking it off the consent agenda, does that take that, the items that what they told us we had, they wanted us to look at? Does that change those at all?
No, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, I think what Councilor Hildebrand was getting at is that, as a matter of law, we have to issue this RFP, so, we, if you don't vote for it, we can answer to the auditor and the Attorney General. But, uh, state law requires us to issue the RFP, and the state auditor wrote the scope of work, everything else is just template.
Okay, thank you, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Council Lady Best.
Okay, I was sitting through legal, and, and I understand all of this, and the more I read it, my curiosity is, who is the staff liaison for this? And, from what I understand, there was inside info that sent this to Santa Fe, so it would come back down and we would be audited on this. Also, I also feel that if you lease property out there, um, you're any way connected out there, that whoever we choose as an auditor cannot be connected to those people, so the, so the city can't be connected, it'd be kinda like the Chamber of Commerce. Nobody was connected to that auditor, we brought one in, they didn't know anybody in this town. And we do have a list of auditors, because we got the same list, I'm sorry, I'm pulling a head thing, we got the same list, similar, for the chamber as we did for the airport, in the auditors. So, I feel that, that whoever is out there doesn't need to be connected, or the auditor doesn't need to know them, and that the, the staff liaison, I'd like to know who that person is.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Best, I guess I'm working, I'm, I'm sort of the point guy with the auditor, he sends things to me, and then if he doesn't, typically, if, if it's something you all need to see, he'll send it to all of you at once, if it's just kind of an internal procedural thing, it'll go to me, and then I'll send it on to whoever needs to do the work.
I would prefer that a finance person is involved with that, Jeannie would be perfect, because she knows all of our finances, for one. I don't think you need to be involved, I think it needs to be.
I appreciate your thoughts.
Their finance department and our finance, that's what an audit is about.
And, uh, I guess you made one other comment, just to let you know, two point, two point, two point one five makes all communications to the auditor about complaints, about anything related to causing a special audit confidential. Similarly, twelve dash six dash six requires that anybody who is aware of a potential financial crime, who's an officer and employee of the city, report it.
Thank you, Councilman Perry.
Yes, sir, just a point of clarification, I guess, for someone to help me, just at the very end, we're, we need to pass this unanimously and send it forward. Uh, but at the very end, the established scope of work may be expanded if deemed necessary by the OSA, so can you just explain that? Is this just an open, or will that come back to us to understand what's happening?
Mr. Mayor Protam, so within the regulations, it, this is the, it's the catch-all clause, so if the audit discovers something, this reserves the right of the auditor to expand the audit and not have us issue a new RFP.
And that, that information will probably come in a letter back to us, and we'll be able to.
Yes, the, the results are a hundred percent public, but you get to see them first.
Thank you.
Okay, so, okay, so now if the clerk will call or roll.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand?
Aye.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Aye.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes. I'd like to speak, please.
Councilman, Council Lady Best?
So, everything that I said, I'd like those in the minutes, to reflect in the minutes, please, thank you.
Okay, by a vote of eight, affirmative, none of the negative, this, the audit request has been passed. The next item, uh, we on thirty, okay, item thirty, consider the approval of scope of work for RFP twenty-three dash zero one-two Emergency Ambulance Services, uh, Councilman Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move that we consider scope of work contained in RFP twenty-three zero one-two for Emergency Ambulance Service.
We have a motion by Councilman Corn, a second by Councilman Foster. Any further discussion? Clerk will call the roll. Or do you wanna voice vote? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, excuse me.
I don't, I don't blame him, I'd go sit down too.
Come on up here, chief, if you wanna, I'm sorry, I was just.
Sit down, stand up, sit down.
Yes, yes, sir, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this, this is simply a, a, a request for you, you guys' consideration for the scope of work for the RFP twenty-three dash zero one-two for the Emergency Ambulance Services contract, to be put out to bid.
Thank you. Any further comments, any discussion, any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
You bet, thank you.
I move, I move we go back to where we were, and, all those in favor of, uh, placing the, uh, item thirty, RFP twenty-three dash oh one-two Emergency Ambulance Services out, uh, sending out an RFP, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of eight, affirmative, none of the negative, it's been passed, next we have item thirty-one, consider the.
Over here, real quick, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna give a shout-out, we're, we're under tremendous time constraint here on this thing, due to our present provider, one, wishing not to renew, and two, asking for an extirpative amount of money to stick around. And I wanna personally thank the chief and all of his staff that worked so diligently to get this RFP information to, I don't know who, of the other team members of the city, worked on this, but they got it turned around in record time, and I wanna applaud them. That's all.
Yes, I, Councilman Corn, I recognize that, that's why I was trying to expedite the process. All right, item, consider the approval, item thirty-one, consider the approval of renewal of a five-year contract with Plateau, Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move that we consider approval of a five-year contract renewal with Plateau.
Second by Councilman Corn, any further discussion? Oh, Ms. Bechtel, go ahead.
Thank you, good evening, um, yeah, to, uh, present this, it's kind of a renewals that we're asking for. We've been with Plateau for the last eight years, um, they haven't, there's been no price increase the last eight years, there is a slight price increase here. Part of it was due to air, they gave us a complete circuit for free for the last eight years, and they decided they wanted to charge us for that. They're not gonna be as graceful, cause they didn't realize they were giving it to us. We discovered that, but, um, currently, there's no other place in town that can provide the services they provide, so, hope you consider this and we can pass this. Anybody has any questions?
Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of item thirty-one, a five-year contract with Plateau, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, by a vote of eight, affirmative, none of the negative, item thirty-one is duly passed. Okay, next we have to consider the reapproval of recommendations for a commission on aging. Uh, um, I had appointed Cynthia Price, or Prince, excuse me, uh, to position four, and Dorothy Hallams to, uh, position five. Councilman Perry?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve your recommendation for the appointments to the commission of aging as follows, position four to Cynthia Prince, and position five to Dorothy Hallams, uh, for, two, for your terms as listed.
Second by Councilman Foster, okay, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, we have a motion to approve the, my appointments to the Commission on Aging. Aging. Ms. Prince and Ms. Helms, we have a motion by Councilman Perry, second by Councilman Foster. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we're going to have to tell them it's eight to nothing?
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, yeah.
It'd be tough.
Just wanted to say that both Ms. Prince and Ms. Helms both have sat out, they have enjoyed theirself tonight. They've just sat here the whole time, but I, I think they're, they're a great addition to the Commission of Aging, I have to say, since, since my appointment to that commission, I've seen that they have such a desire to do something great in this community. They had some openings, and I think that both of them will do a fantastic job representing the city.
I hope they work together, I hope they maybe sit a little closer together and everything can get along. We don't have to think alike, we just have to vote together. Okay, next we have, as Mayor's appointment to the Occupancy Tax Board, Mr. Bachta and Councilman Perry for item 33.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One quick question, can someone please tell me Mr. Bachta's first name? Or is it just D?
It is just D.
All right, I, that, I can handle that. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve your recommendation for the appointment to the Occupancy Tax Board for position two, Mr. D. Bachta, to serve the two-year terms.
Second by Councilman Foster. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of my appointment of Mr. D. Bachta to the Occupancy Tax Board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By a vote of eight, affirmative, my appointment to the Occupancy Tax Board, Mr. D. Bachta has, has occurred. Next we have to consider the award of a recommendation for an RFP for 23-010 Vehicle Maintenance and Repair Service Authorization for the City Manager entering a contract negotiations as multi-source award with that. So I have that, Councilman Corn. Yes, Councilman Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor, before we start this vote, I may, I work for one of the individuals that's on this list, so I've got to recuse myself, and we'll step out of the room during conversation and dialogue over this.
Thank you very much. Okay, we, so, we have a motion by Councilman Corn.
Second.
Oh, wait, one, please.
I'm sorry, we didn't get a motion.
I'm sorry, he was waiting.
Well, he's, oh, well, he.
Well, he took the long way.
Put, put, put your fingers in your ear. That was his wishes for good, sound reason, so I'll give it to him. Mr. Mayor, I move approval of award recommendation for RFP 23-10 Vehicle Maintenance and Repair Services authorized by the City Manager to enter to contract negotiations, multi-source award to be to the recommended offer, offerers.
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Perry, I thought I heard that first. Okay, Mr. Holcomb.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I come before you this evening to ask you to consider approval of award recommendation for RFP 23-10 for Vehicle Maintenance and Repair Services and Authorization for the City Manager to enter into contract negotiations with the recommended offerers. City Roswell went out to RFP for Vehicle Maintenance and Repair Services. A total of 10 proposals were received on January 20, 24th, 2023. Two proposals were deemed non-responsive to the RFP requirements. The Evaluation Committee recommends a multi-source award to all offerers as presented on the Award Recommendation Report. Just a note, the Finance Committee recommended approval, two with one recusal at their regular meeting on February 2nd, and one family member of the city employee is the owner of Hicks Automotive, and a city councillor is the chief financial officer for Kremlin Auto Group. I stand for any questions.
Okay, so we, Councilman Perry.
This is actually on behalf of Counselor Moore, who had to leave us this evening, but she did have a question. In the abstract and also in the actual recommendation, it says, consider for the author, to authorize for City Manager to enter into this. Mike is our Assistant City Manager and Acting City Manager, so I think the verbiage is still appropriate, but she asked the question, and I did not want to answer on behalf of anyone. Could someone just clarify?
Since our attorney's not in the room, I'm, I'm in that role as interim City Manager at this point, so I'll be the one taking care of that responsibility.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have, Councilman Perry, count, oh, what's? I'm sorry, that's. Okay, so now we have, is there any further comments on this business? Okay, so now we have, if the clerk could call the roll, or if we have a motion to approve, RFP 23-010 Vehicle Maintenance and Repair Services by Councilman Corn, second by Councilman Perry, if the clerk could call the roll.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Aye.
Counselor Arnold? The motion passes seven to zero with one recusal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody.
Mr. Mayor, if someone could, Janie, could someone grab Counselor Hildebrand?
Well, it'd be better if you didn't do it, Janie. Okay, consider the approval of Task Force One for Professional Engineering Services to Armstrong Consultants for the Phase One of the Rub Hanger Project. So we have Councilman Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve Task Order One for Professional Engineering Services to Armstrong Consult, Consultants for Phase One of the Rub Hanger Project that we discussed at the last meeting.
Second by, we have a motion for approval by Councilman Corn, second by Counselor Foster. Yes, ma'am.
Here to answer any questions.
Ms. Gray.
We'd ask that you approve this task order to Armstrong Construction so they can begin the geotech and the survey of the land where the Rub Hanger will be placed.
Oh, is there any further, we have a motion, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask, Councilman Perry. Is, Juan, probably best for you, the, the amount, 73, 340, that is enough to ensure and encumber the, the remainder of the funds?
Mr. Mayor and Counselor, yes, I mean, the amount that we are asking for encumbrance will certainly go towards that requirement. We definitely will not risk any, any sort of loss of the appropriation.
Thank you.
Okay. So is any further discussions? Seeing none, if the clerk could call the roll on, for the task, approval of Task Force Order One, Professional Engineering Services to Armstrong Consultants for Phase One of the Rub Hanger Project.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Hildenbrand?
Aye.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Aye.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
By a vote of eight, affirmative, none of the, none of the zero. Item 35, the Professional Services Contract was awarded to Armstrong Engineering for Phase One of the Rub Hanger. Next we have Boards and Commission Reports. Are there any boards and commissions? Okay, seeing them, public participation on non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the public would care to say something before they go home? Anybody on TV or anywhere else want to say anything before they go home or go to bed? Okay, so, okay, future agenda items, we have anything there? Mr. Matthews? Yep, okay. Do you have any announcements that you would like to make? Okay, well, being that the wallace has sunk and everything else, I would move we stand adjourned. Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody, for participating.